We're up and running now, so would everyone please join me with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, you made it.
I made it.
I'm to break stream.
Ian, good morning. Uh, just asked for a motion to approve the agenda today.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. We'll move on to our opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the board? If not, we'll move on to the commissioner reports. Any commissioners have a report they'd like to make today? If not, we'll go ahead and move on to our regular business. Sean, are you gonna handle number one?
Yes.
And two, Elise.
Uh, we need to award the bid for the county-owned property known as parcel number two-three-zero-ten-zero-five-zero-one-four, legally described as Worthing Original, south two feet of lot fourteen, block five. Uh, we received two bids, one from the city of Worthing, which is invalid due to no payment being enclosed with their bid, and the other from Jerry Flanagan for three hundred dollars. This is that two-foot strip in the city of Worthing.
Consider a motion to accept Jerry Flanagan's bid.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins, are you aware of the vote?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. Uh, move on to item two.
This is to award the bid for the county-owned property known as parcel number two-six-zero-two-zero-zero-seven-zero-zero-three, legally described as Beerus Armors Edition, south seventy-four feet of north two feet of the east one-hundred-and-fifty feet. There were three bids received, um, Brett Winyah, uh, W-Y-N-J-A, for six hundred and fifty dollars, Fossen Rentals for one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, and Daniel Boge for one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. So the highest bid would be Daniel Boge for one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. I'd ask for a, uh, motion to approve, uh, the bid from Daniel Boge.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Move on to item three. Um, who's handling that?
Morning.
Good morning, Sheriff.
I'm asking to reclassify a deputy position to a sergeant position. The need for this is in our, in our civil department along with our evidence and policy, uh, to implement our new policy. We've added several employees over the years, and we're just getting light in the supervisory part. Uh, with mental health stuff that we've taken on over the last two years has, has definitely increased our workflow down there, and we just need a fill in the chain of command. It's currently being overseen by the investigation lieutenant, um, which frankly just doesn't have enough time to do it, to properly supervise it. We take a lot of calls from attorneys, especially with the mental health program. This would increase our, uh, costs for wages from anywhere from thirty-two-hundred and three dollars to sixty-four-hundred and seven dollars annually, which would be easily, uh, absorbed in our current budget. So not asking for another FTE, just asking to reclassify a current FTE.
All right, thank you.
How many people does this person supervise?
Excuse me. How many people does this, uh, how, how many people will this person supervise?
Supervise the two civil deputies, the office staff, this, uh, administrative assistant for the civil department, and, um, manage the increase in calls we're getting from the attorney. So supervising three to four people, plus all deputies serve civil papers, so just kind of managing that program, but direct supervise three people.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Sheriff Swenson? If not, you've heard the request. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Move on to item four on our agenda? Who's handling that? You gotta be, you gotta be in ten places at once this morning, Jake.
Yeah, we're experiencing some technical difficulties with the live stream. Uh, my first, um, item on the agenda is for, to have our system, our let, commission meetings, our planning and zoning meetings being broadcast on CityLink and channel sixteen. CityLink is handled by the city of Sioux Falls. Um, I was actually, someone inquired about it, ca, gave me a call, inquired about it, and said, I know this person that does this. Give them a call and see if they can get on there, and gave them a call, and they said, yes, we can do that. They just had a couple of recommendations, um, which we try to implement now, and it's not kind of working through the bugs on that. But other than that, I was just gonna see if you guys were okay with us doing that.
Great idea.
Is there a cost to it at all, Jake?
Uh, there'll be a little cost of kind of getting the connectors set up, and that's a couple hundred bucks. But other than that, it's, I think it'd be beneficial for our citizens and everybody out there.
All right, good idea.
It would only be a replay. We can't do it live because everybody seems to do their meetings on Tuesday mornings. So other than that, they'll have a schedule, and everybody can go and watch it.
That makes sense. Um, we've heard the request. Uh, is there any discussion? If not, I'd ask for a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, may I call the roll?
Uh, what, may I have clarification on the motion?
Well, the motion would be to, uh...
To broadcast the commission and the planning and zoning meetings on CityLink, channel sixteen.
Okay.
They have a whole big audience up there.
Yeah, they say they got a big group. Um, it works on Apple TV and Roku and...
Help inform citizens of Sioux Falls, too, that maybe not plug into our meetings or go down and look at our, our website.
Yeah, and it's on Midco and VAST currently right now, if you're watching on there.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Uh, my next item, trying to keep it short, but my next item on the agenda is to purchase new equipment, and I'm having some problems purchasing equipment. Uh, we actually purchased equipment in April, and so I haven't received it. And the projected date of getting it is next April. So I'm gonna have a huge problem with my budget for the 2020 year, 'cause I will be over budget 'cause of the items that I'm purchasing for 2021 will be here in 2022. And so I'm kind of updating ya, kind of seeing if you're okay with that. It's equipment that we need. Um, it's just, I can't get it here any sooner.
Well, you're not, I mean, you're not spending that money. It's already budgeted for this year, so then I'll just go back into the general.
Yeah, it's kind of like a wash. It would be, I don't have the authority for next year, but it's money I have been spent out of last year, or this current year would be.
Does anybody have any questions for Jake on that?
What is the equipment?
So I did list out some of it on there. We do have some just kind of little bits and pieces where it's like a couple hundred dollars here, a couple hundred dollars here. But the big-ticket items are a computer refresh, uh, that was supposed to be purchased out of 2021. It won't get here until 2022. That is a estimated cost of about sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, I can't give you exact numbers, but it will not go over that because with the ordering problem, um, not a lot of companies want to over-backorder things. So it's kind of like I can buy five pieces of computers here, five here, five here, or five here, but the total will not go over that amount. Um, another thing is a copier refresh for the auditor and the register of deeds office. Those are in the budget, but they can't guarantee, I mean, that they would get them by next year. They said it could be December, at the end of December at the latest, but we're kind of stuck there. And then another one on there is I'm kind of getting ahead of the game. It's for the sheriff patrol vehicle systems and the cellular devices for their vehicles. That is actually budgeted for 2022. I'm gonna start the order now, so I can actually get it purchased in 2022, just in case if it has that big, long gap of backorder on it.
So specifically, do you, do you, you want separate motions on these authorizations to purchase, or?
I think we could do them all as one.
Just generally that you can go ahead with those? They were budgeted for 2021, and I'll carry over.
Yep, every one of the projects was budgeted for. It's just over the amount and that year different on budget.
Delay.
Yeah.
Um, anybody have any other questions for staff? If not, um, consider a motion.
I'll so moved, Madam Chair. Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
This motion is to authorize purchase of 2022 equipment?
Correct. Uh, authorized purchases above my spending threshold for 2022.
Did that change anybody's motion? If not, um, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Carries? Pictometry, who's handling that?
Where's John?
Does Jake have the cost or anything for that? Okay, well, we're gonna move on then. Uh, item number seven, to authorize the auditor to register online for the proposed opioid settlement. Sherri, you wanna come up? Or Bill? Or both?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
Do it, all right.
I just will do the registration if they approve it.
We received a letter from the Attorney General's Office.
Can you get a little closer to the microphone? Sorry.
We received a letter from the Attorney General's Office about the opioid settlements that are going on. There is a website that's opened up that allows counties to go ahead and register for, um, being able for those proceeds. Those proceeds, according to the letter, um, can be used for things such as opiate addiction, uh, treatment. It can be used to set up programs. It can do, be used for educational purposes. There was, um, a fairly significant amount of money that's being estimated for the state to receive. In order for the state to participate in this settlement, there has to be, I think they refer to it as a critical mass of counties that have to go ahead and sign up and participate. It is expected that the larger counties may see money out of the settlement, whereas some of the smaller counties won't. Since we're the third-largest county, I would expect that Lincoln County is going to be in line for some of that settlement money concerning opioids. The leg, I assume the commission is aware that there's been quite significant, um, litigation over the fact that the pharmaceutical companies went ahead and marketed opioids to a lot of individuals who became addicted, and the states and the counties have suffered accordingly for addiction, uh, for crime, and for other hardships that have been transferred over to the public in large. So this is a settlement for those, um, pharmaceutical companies who went ahead and sold it. And, uh, in order to settle the litigation, their sending of a fund is gonna be similar to tobacco legislation. And so that is what the request from the auditor's office is, is to sign us up into the settlement program. The downside of that is means Lincoln County is going to give up their right to individually sue these organizations, which we have been pursuing anyways. So my recommendation would be is that we join the settlement, we sign up, and then we see if we're available for any of those funds in the future.
And then, um, Bill, just, and maybe you don't know the answer to this, those settlement funds, they go right into general, or are they set aside in a separate account?
I think that's all in the process, and we'll learn that as it goes. I think it'll be, uh, from the literature that we've received, there are specific categories of things that we have to use it for. It has to be specifically goes back to opiate addiction in some way. So that could be a treatment program, that could be educational, that could be to offset the costs in the, um, sheriff's department or the state's attorney's office or the court systems. Uh, that could be educational programs within the schools. Um, as long as it ties back to opiate addiction, um, we haven't been given enough as to what type of oversight or what type of reporting is gonna be required, but it has to be tied back to something to do with, uh, uh, opioid prevention or to offsetting the cost that the counties are already, um, receiving.
Are the school districts part of this as well, or just general counties in general?
Um, the le, letters that we had talked about counties, didn't talk about any other agencies.
All right.
Yes.
Will this process require us to, uh, catalog or determine what kind of impact the opioid crisis has had on us?
D, yes, there may be some reporting requirements where we need to come up and be able to explain, um, some of those effects.
Do you, do you or does your office have some kind of indication already of what impact it had on this town?
We can go back and track, uh, prescription cases with opioids, and we can track the, uh, pers, doctor shopping cases. A, a significant number of those are actually done by the Attorney General's Office because they have assigned prosecutor and assigned investigator for doctor shopping, um, and those type of cases. But those are things and informations that we can go ahead and seek out. And then a lot of the terms with addictions, you have crossovers. So you may find marijuana, you may find alcohol in the car, and then you may find prescription drugs. So I, I think we could go back and determine quite a bit of it. Um, we could probably go ahead and estimate based on our population, opioid addiction, and how it would affect our population base. Um, so there would be ways to collect the numbers and information and make estimates and provide that information.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Well, no, I, Bill, I did some further checking, Bill, after we talked yesterday. I need pretty well outlined that. I mean, this is something that, uh, the pharmaceutical companies definitely want to put behind them and to avoid prosecution and avoid a lot of other things. They've coughed up a bunch of money and, and, uh, and that's for us to, you know, disseminate and how we can recoup. I would be curious, uh, I have a question, if, do, this for Sheriff Swenson? See, d, if in this thing, when you categorize mental health things like that, do you ever categorize those into like drugs or alcohol or stuff, and would some of this fall under your jurisdiction or what you monitor?
Honestly, this is the first time I've heard about this program, but I would think it would. We definitely track drug cases, um, what it came to, and maybe some housing costs as well.
So, you know, you could regroup a lot out of this because if you have to trace it, you have to take care of it, you have to treat it, you have to house it. You know, this could be like a snowball effect on how much opioids have really cost the county, which we probably never think about directly. Yo.
Thank you. Um, so the request is to authorize the auditor to register online for the opioid settlement, um, fund, so...
We would be joining the settlement.
Joining the settlement.
And I want to be clear, we'd be giving up, I assume, our right to sue individually as a county, but we participate in the current settlement.
You were not pursuing that, your office, pursuing that litigation individual in any way, or is it?
No.
Thank you. We've heard the request. Is there a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, may I call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Mr. Rollin, you left too soon. You're gonna update us on courthouse and state's attorney case numbers?
So the first we, I've been continuing to negotiate concerning the courthouse. There is a, there's been multiple meetings with, um, the Lincoln County Development Group, the court system. They have a general concept and plan put together now that they're gonna get us numbers and bring back, so we can give that to the commission. So you have a general concept of what they're looking at, what will be inside of the courthouse, and then what they would estimate a cost to be. So that should be coming here shortly. Um, during those meetings, it looks like at the end of the year, we will be up twenty percent for caseload. Um, the indications it's hearing from the court system is that we may be roughly about sixty percent of our case filings for Lincoln County to Rapid City, to Pankton County. So, uh, in comparison, I believe they have ten courtrooms and you have two. So that is just, I wanted to point out, uh, where we're at. Previously, we've grown as a county somewhere between three to four percent on average. We have seen roughly usually about an eight percent increase in cases, so this year is a significant increase, and we haven't seen slowing down at this point.
Does anybody have any other questions for staff?
Bill, the twenty percent increase that you referenced, is that year over year?
That is from last year.
Okay.
This year. So this is, this, normally we would be looking at about an eight percent increase. It's pretty traditional. We might have a little bit of a spike there. Um, that gives us our average, so we may have a five or six percent year, and then we'll have a ten. But this is, this is, uh, we haven't had something like this before, where we've had this type of increase.
Do you have a breakdown based upon the type of cases? You know, for example, civil, criminal, et cetera?
Yes. Uh, I didn't bring the exact numbers with you, me, but I can tell you that about two weeks ago, we passed last year's numbers for felonies. We had almost five hundred there. We've passed that mark at this point in time. Uh, there's a good chance it will be somewhere between the five to six hundred felonies this year. Um, traditionally, we're closer to five is what, and we expected to be about five-twenty-five, five-thirty for the year. Our misdemeanor numbers are up about eighty percent. So overall, when I checked two weeks ago, at that time last year, we were about thirteen hundred case filings total for the office. This year, we're looking at sixteen hundred for juveniles, A&amp;Ns, misdemeanors, and felonies.
Now, um, 'cause I've had this question asked of me, and I don't know how to answer it. But just so we, or make sure the public understands this, we're talking apples to apples. Are we talking, when you use the word felonies, but you also use the term case filings? You know, for example, just so the public knows, if one person goes out, commits six felonies, or gets charged with six felonies, that would obviously increase. So just so the public knows, you know, this issue, are we talking case filings, or are we talking just the number of charges that have been charged?
Um, we have seen a number of, our unique individuals have increased, so defendants. But we've also seen where we are having the same individual commit more crimes. So instead of a ju, so, so it's, it's a combination of both. So we have, and when I say unique filings for the whole circuit, I'm talking about criminal and civil, or I'm talking about comparison. When I'm talking about our office, I'm talking about the criminal filings. We have an increase in individuals, but a large num, or a substantial growth on that is that we're seeing people who are picking up their third, fourth, and fifth DWI in the process, or while they're out on bond, they're picking up another methamphetamine charge, um, or they commit a burglary. And then by the time we get done with the process, we may have two or three charges on that individual before we get them sentenced.
Yeah, you know, we just talked about joining the opioid settlement, and obviously, um, illegal drugs in particular, but some prescription drug abuse has led to the problems we face. I think it's important to have that conversation with the public, so the public understands, are we talking about, and it's kind of all of the above, but are we talking about repeat offenders? Are we talking about individuals who commit lots of different crime? Or are we talking about, and I think it's all of the above, are we talking about unique new individuals into the system? So when we use this statistic here, twenty percent increase in caseload, does that mean twenty percent increase in new individuals?
I could not tell you, um, the exact numbers. I can tell you that we have more unique individuals from last year coming into the system. We are having, during that, we're seeing people who are committing multiple crimes sometimes. It's, these crimes are reported, and we detect them, and then they receive more charges because once you've identified them, um, if you connect them to other crimes.
Right.
Sometimes they're on bond, and because they're being monitored, um, then they're caught with, um, you know, drugs at that point in time because of our twenty-four-seven system, or electronic monitoring, or a SCRAM bracelet, or a drug patch, and they come back that they're using drugs. Um, it is not unusual for us to see people who have addiction problems break into homes, going into the medicine cabinet looking for prescription medications. So those type of crimes, we're seeing more of them. But one of our biggest drivers right now is violent crime. I mean, that is substantially up from, uh, what we've seen. We've seen a lot more aggravated assaults, sexual assaults than we have in the past.
Thank you.
Staff? If not, thank you, Mr. Rollin. We'll move on to item nine on our agenda.
My apologies. Some time ago, uh, this board asked to plant the southern portion, the southern twenty acres of the Highway Shop parcel. I have before you that plant. The plant is lot one in tract A in the west half of the northwest quarter of section twenty-one, township ninety-eight, north range nine west of the fifth prime meridian, Lincoln County, South Dakota. And I, I seek to approve that plant and authorize the chair to execute.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for staff?
Madam Chair, what were we gonna do with that?
Like we were gonna sell it, weren't we?
We were gonna, is that going to sell? That was my understanding.
Okay. Actually, I think we should postpone that. I do believe we're gonna end up having two tracks on that. If confirmation, there should be two eligibility's. Hence, we should market it as, uh, two separate parcels in there. So we may even need to subdivide that, but I think we do need to have a conversation with, um, Toby, Toby to confirm that. Thank you.
So are we ready to approve this plat, or do we need to hold off on that?
I would recommend holding off until we confirm with, uh, Toby, um, on the eligibility's and then the desire to subdivide it, so we could sell both individual parcels separately. But that's only my recommendation.
And I'm fine with that. Does anybody have any other comments they'd like to make about it?
Well, I would think that's, really, if, you think there's, Mike, there's two eligibility's left, correct?
That's my belief.
They'd be highly desirable.
Then why don't, why don't we go ahead and table this and put it back on the agenda for discussion with, um...
Madam Chair, I'll move to table that until the next meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Sean, may I call the roll, please?
It was seconded by Poppins?
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Move on to item ten. Um, asking for board action on appraisal and sale of surplus county vehicle, whose vehicle is it?
So we just surplus'd the Dodge Charger. Um, so I need three Lincoln County landowners as appraisal committee, and I need authorization for the auditor's office to, um, advertise for sealed bids.
All right, um... Who wants to volunteer to appraise the vehicle? Sheriff?
You want me to appraise the vehicle?
How about you and John Rambo, and...
How about Mr. Nelson?
All right, perfect. We have Larry Nelson volunteering here, all right. So we've got our three members. Is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, may you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Uh, let's see, I...
May I have authorization, uh, to advertise for sealed bids?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, may you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Madam Chair, could I find, how many miles do we have on this local one owner here?
Hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
One thirty.
On the Dodge Charger that we just surplus'd? It is a two thousand, two thousand thirteen Dodge Charger with one hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred sixteen miles.
Just broke in.
Thanks for that. Uh, well, I'm gonna circle back, um, to item six. John, were you gonna handle that?
This is the pictometry license agreement. This is a, agreement is to provide continuation of our bi-yearly countywide capture of aerial photography for twenty-two, twenty-four, and twenty-six. It's a six-year period, uh, similar to what we've already just completed last year, our contract is over. Uh, we had flights in twenty-fifteen, twenty-seventeen, and twenty-nineteen, so basically continuation. Cost is budgeted forty-four thousand per year, three flights, each flight eighty-eight thousand. Provides up-to-date reference for planning equalization, highway, and GIS. Uh, agencies, realtors, uh, engineers, general public use this. We get access to the previous years of biannual photos, we can check history, uh, using these. Asked seven years ago by the commission to get involved with, uh, pictometry and get these. We need to have this agreement completed, so that they can schedule next year's flight, if you so choose to continue with the pictometry.
What, um, I know we have parcel browser as well, do you have any, I guess, are, are both of those being utilized to the same level, or?
Yes.
We need both?
We, uh, get the aerial photography, and then pictometry has a, uh, program that is used in the assessor's office, and we also use those aerials in our parcel browser. So it's, basically, it's the aerial photos that we use, and we use them in many different, uh, applications.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for staff?
John, how much does the assessors, um, use this? I mean, do you have any idea? I mean, we, we could ask Carl a little bit.
Oh, every day.
You probably have a good feel.
Every day.
'Cause my impression was it always saves, before they go out and look at, or visit a property, they have the ability to see it firsthand, so they're not surprised if there's a, you know, some change, a deck, or a building, or something that gets up, put on there.
True, and, uh, one of the, just an example would be a parking lot that you'd have to go out and measure, uh, check to see if it has curb, that type of thing for assessment purposes, they can measure that in the program. Uh, also with the oblique photos, which you can see sideways or at an angle, uh, you can see siding type, roofing type, uh, there's a lot of things that up front, they can know before they go out or see without going out. And then the change aspect, uh, over time, every two years is a, is a good timeframe, we'd love to have it every year, but that's not cost-effective, so two years is our compromise.
And this is in your budget?
This is in the budget.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, uh, Commissioner Poppins?
On page sixty-four, we have an image of a ortho three-inch versus six-inch, and there's a highlighted area in the northern end. Could you explain for the public why the differential on, uh, certain areas only three and some is six?
Yeah, the, uh, growth area has a lot more homes, uh, density, that type of thing, the three-inch, uh, is there's an added benefit to all of those homes that are going up there. Percentage-wise, how many homes are being built, or buildings, development is happening up there, uh, to see the detail there.
And how is that utilized by the county, um, to their, um, needs?
Uh, it's again in the parcel browser and in the pictometry application that they view that.
But does the treasurer's office, or the register deeds office, or the equalization office, who's utilizing the higher definition?
Everyone.
They are?
Yeah, it's, it's included.
It's included, but how are we utilizing it? So, 'cause there's an extra cost for doing it, correct?
Right.
So, just so the public understands how that, why the differential there, and who's using it, and how we're implementing it, and, and, uh, what vital aspect of our activities are, you know, need to have that higher definition?
All of them. You have higher detail in the urbanized areas, and so the three-inch gives us more definition.
Exactly, it gives us more definition, but how do we, how do we utilize that higher definition? Does the equalization office able to, uh, cut back on the amount of time that they need to evaluate a pre, a piece of property? Does the highway, you know, not have to look at road grades or something like that differential, they can see a road sign and more definition? How is it we actually are utilizing that higher definition?
I guess I don't understand the question, or it, to me, is obvious, the detail, and that is needed to see those.
You can see it, but how does that actually benefit? How does that equate to more efficiency in our operations, uh, et cetera?
You'd have to ask the other departments how that, okay, does.
So you're suggesting that we, uh, spend the extra money on this, but you're not sure how it benefits the other departments?
I just know that it benefits the other departments in the accuracy, the visual accuracy of their determinations. It's, it's a visual.
What is the cost differential?
Um, I don't have that with me.
We enter a timeline to have to prove this today, or can we wait until, John, next week and get a more definitive answer as to the cost, and to how this, uh, increased, um, expenditure would be better utilized by our county departments?
It is recommended, we have been postponing this for several months for budgetary reasons.
Yeah.
And if we do miss this, then we don't get next year. And I think I'd like to answer...
What is the deadline?
Uh, there is not a deadline that I've been given.
Okay, I'd ask for a motion to table this item until our questions can be answered.
I would so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean, may you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Move on to item eleven on our agenda, talking about the grant writer position that we talked about last week. Um, I'm gonna ask, I know Commissioner Schmidt has been, uh, working on this, uh, to some degree, so I'm gonna ask him to tee that off for us.
Well, I, um, as I indicated to you last week, NACO has been very active in the ARPA funds to try to get counties to have the ability to, uh, spend these things at their discretion as opposed to the very limited amount that the treasury department has set forth. So we got some good news here. Um, uh, Senate bill thirty-thirty, or thirty-eleven was passed by a voice vote to allow counties to, um, be able to, for us, to take care of, almost like our eleven million dollars, to be able to have ten million dollars at our discretion. There is a House, uh, bill, uh, fifty-seven thirty-five, and our primary sponsor is Dusty, or is Dusty Johnson, who I visited with, who has, uh, a bipartisan approach to this. And what it would mean, and I'll read what's applicable to Lincoln County, allows counties to allocate up to ten million dollars of ARPA recovery fronts for the provision of government services, and ten million dollars or thirty percent for infrastructure-related activities authorized under existing federal surface transportation laws, including local match for some programs, and projects eligibility under the community or block grants, CDBG grants. Uh, we won't go into PILT, uh, payment in lieu of taxes, because that really doesn't apply to us, it applies to our West River friends, because they depend heavily on that, and that was one of the big pushes, because it would limit, uh, a county for like Zebok, or Harding, or Mead, or places like that, to be able to take these funds and apply those for that PILT money. So, what we're asking, if you have such, uh, in mind, I have, uh, there's a template letter that they're asking all counties to send to their congressional, uh, representative, and, uh, it's a rather simple one, it is just NACO's, uh, and I, I will reserve that in case anybody wants to pick it up afterwards and send a letter, or if you have communications with, uh, with Representative Johnson, you're encouraged to do so. But we're looking very positively that this legislation will pass, and that it will allow Lincoln County, as the rest of the counties in our state, to have more, uh, ability to determine where they want to put their dollars and for what purposes. That's kind of a summation, Madam Chair.
So, just in talking about this agenda item, we were gonna put out an RFP for a grant administrator, and I'm wondering if that's premature, or if it's something we should consider anyway. Um, I know there's probably some other funding that's gonna be available, and maybe the county is ready for a grant administrator, or somebody to write these grants.
Madam Chair?
For us, so, does anyone wanna speak to that?
If I could?
Please.
To find a good grant writer, uh, is, uh, a task that just, they just don't grow on trees. I mean, I've had the privilege of writing, and I'm sure Commissioner Gibbon has as well, when he was in administration. Grant writing tends to be kind of an art, because you, the, the readers, whoever they are, look for certain things. While we're not hiring anybody, I do think it's a wise move to put an RFP out and see what kind of response we get, and what kind of offers that certain grant writers may have. And that's just, uh, to me, uh, a way in which we can further make our decision based on what we learned from individuals that may or may not choose to respond to, uh, that request for proposals. So I would, I would encourage us to continue on with this, and explore what was available, because you're right, there are other grants out there which will take, uh, individuals far beyond our capacity, unless, we got some surprises, to be able to, um, access those, those funds.
Um, just a quick question, you had mentioned ten million dollars or thirty percent, is it, is it up to ten, ten million dollars?
It would be up to ten million dollars.
Okay, but thirty percent is what, they're thinking of opening it up?
Yes.
Up to that amount? So if we have eleven million, it's only thirty percent of the eleven million?
No, we'd get ten million, up to ten million dollars.
Okay.
Thirty percent's the minority then?
Yeah, so what we would have, if, if you broke this down, the, cutting off the thirty percent, which is, uh, somewhat not applicable, we would have ten million dollars to, at our, we would go to an application, of what we would spend the ten million dollars on. We'd have to prioritize and put that down. It leaves us this extra million dollars, and one of the things they always talk about are local things for local municipalities. For example, I know that, uh, T has approached, uh, both Commissioner Poppins and myself about assisting with some of their sewer and water projects. I think the city of Canton has, um, several sewer projects that they're working on.
And Hudson has approached me as well.
Yeah, so, we have the discretion of, we don't have to take all ten million, we can disseminate, uh, the, the monies out to help these projects and further the development in these communities, and the rest of it, we could, uh, devote to ourselves. So it gives us a, you know, I think, a, a pretty much, a free hand in how we want to take these funds and better the overall county, whether it's our projects, uh, for ourselves, whether it's using for building, uh, purposes, whether it's used for infrastructure purposes, and the same time, uh, able to, uh, assist our municipalities in their development. So I think this frees everything up just the way we would like it, 'cause it makes good sense how we would, uh, how we would exer, uh, execute the expenditures of these funds.
Thank you, um, just, who wrote the, we have a grant administrator draft in front of us, and then we have the RFP. Who wrote the job description? Julia, did you do that, or? Can you just, I know there's some areas where you needed some clarification.
Yeah, based on the information I was received, I just drafted a job description, and I wasn't quite sure what the, if you choose to move forward with this option, um, who this individual would report to? Is it their own department, do they report to the commission? What, what did you have in mind?
So, one of my first question is, was this, um, job description going to go out with the RFP, or is the RFP standalone?
I think it's a combination of both, right?
These are just options for the commission, you get to pick from.
Okay.
So we could do one or the other, we could do both, we can do them individual.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking if we do this, that it should be, I don't know, grant administrator slash grant writer? That it would cover both of those areas, if we're gonna do it, just to see what interest is out there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to change the name on the job description if you'd like, but the job description does encompass the actual writing of the grant.
Sure.
So if you wanna change the position title, by all means, we could do that.
And I don't know, were there any other unknowns, um, in the RFP that we need to talk about if we're gonna do this?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so last week, when we were talking about this position, it sounded like to me that this position was a compliance position. But now what I'm hearing is this is a grant writing position? 'Cause I know Commissioner Schmidt was going on about, we need grant writers and all that, and then somebody corrected him, that's, and, and then we got into this issue of, is it gonna be a compliance position versus a grant writing position? So I'm just kinda wondering what changed in the last week, where we've kind of creeped into grant writing as opposed to just the compliance issue of ARP?
Right, no, and I totally understand what you're saying, and I think this came, kind of, became an issue with this potential of this money getting opened up. I think the money's still gonna have to be managed to a certain degree, and as, it's my understanding that there are gonna be additional monies that are gonna be available, that we might wanna have somebody on board to write grants for those monies, as well as to manage them, um, as they come in. So, I mean, this is just a discussion that we're having, I mean, I, I don't have a hard position one way or the other, myself, on, on what we're looking at doing, but I think this is something that we should look at. I know one of the questions was, um, you know, is this, are we gonna, is it an RFP for an employee, is it an RFP for an independent contractor, um, with a limited time period? I mean, there's things that we need to look at if we're gonna put out this RFP. So that's all I was, um, wanting to address, is what actually are we doing if we're gonna do it?
Those were my questions as well, Madam Chair, um, you know, for example, is this a new FTE? Or typically, when we do RFPs, we're establishing a contract, and we're paying that person on a as-needed basis. So I'd like to flush that out, hear the pros and the cons of that. Got some concerns if we're looking at a new FTE, um, but, uh, this may be an easier pill to swallow if, uh, the ARP money, so for example, does the ARP money pay... But this may be an easier pill to swallow if the ARP money, so for example, does the ARP money pay for this position?
It would.
Yeah, I'd assume like compliance cost and things like that. But I do want to go back to one other thing though as well that may influence me. So Commissioner Schmidt, so I've kind of read through this Senate Bill three thousand eleven, and I'm a little unclear on this. You said that you spoke with Congressman Johnson, so maybe his bill's a little different than what the Senate bill is. But my question is, so we've kind of thrown out this term "infrastructure", but that term has been thrown out before at the national level, and there doesn't seem to be any consensus on what infrastructure is. So I guess my question for you is, do you know what Senate Bill three thousand eleven or Congressman Johnson's bill actually pays for? So does it, you know, my understanding is it proposes amendments to the National Federal Highway Transportation Safety Act. Well, that invokes issues about roads and bridges in this county. But does this also cover other infrastructure projects for the county? So for example, is your understanding that this could be used to, you know, for example, build a courthouse?
Yeah, I, yes, as I indicated to you previously, we have the discretion of utilizing that to our best advantage. So if you have infrastructure, roads, bridges, or if you decide as a body that the money is best spent to try to alleviate the courthouse situation, you have that discretion to do that. Now, as far as what the bipartisan bill in the House calls for, there are some differences which I can't articulate, but at this time. But in talking to Congressman Johnson, he indicated some of the things that he liked to put in there. So I'm sure that if they do pass this legislation, that they'll have to come to a compromise, as they do on most every bill, and then finalize the passage with both houses. So I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Well, I, I mean, I guess what we're trying to figure out here is just what could the money be spent on because that may influence us as to, you know, my next question, which is, if those bills pass, do we still need this grant administrator position?
Can I, can I go back to that, Madam Chair?
Please.
I don't see this grant writing position as a full-time position at all, and I would ask Commissioner Gibbons to chime in. The grant writing positions that I have used when, for college, or for, when I was at college or even at the housing, we contract with an individual to do this or a firm, because there are grant writing firms that also respond to this. But that's on an individual basis. They are not a full-time position. You, you contract with them for their direct services, and when completed, it's finished. So I don't see this person as being an FTE for this county at all. I just see this on a case-by-case basis whenever we would utilize or need to apply for a special grant or if it would take someone, I don't know that it's gonna take an individual to, for this ARPA funds. I think there, I think we will be able to do that ourselves. That's just my own opinion, having talked to those people. But Jim, I would ask you to, because you've written, I don't know how many hundreds of grants yourself, or you may have hired somebody, but that hasn't put a position in the school system at all.
No, the big thing is to play on words. You have to have the right words for a lot of these grants, and a good grant writer will pay for themselves. But at the same time too, I do think we need to have some clarification. Is this a grant writing position or a elevation of money? I do know that Representative Anderson reached out to me this last week too, and he had heard about this and wondering if there was money available that we would have to assist in some infrastructure, in reallocating some money to roads in the southern part of the county. And I know we've talked about our highway superintendent and Mr. Floyd dealing with one fifty-two and, and the issue coming up in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-five with those construction projects down there. And so, again, everyone is kind of wondering if there's some money available and how much is available and so forth for some of these things.
The way the, the way the current RFP is written is that it is a separate contracting position for a four-year period. And I don't know, you know, maybe four years is too much, maybe it's not enough. I don't know what the thought process is on that. And then I'm also wondering, I know it specifically sets out in the, asking for experience in the area of federal grants. I'm wondering if that shouldn't say state or federal, if there are funds available. And Bill, this would be a professional services, wouldn't it? I mean.
It would be.
Okay.
You know, Madam Chair, at this point, we don't know what kind of response we would get. We're, we're not committing to anything.
Correct.
The only expenditures we have would be to finish writing and, and put this in our, some form of media out for the public to, or for individuals to respond to. I would be curious to see what kind of reaction we would get from an RFP and what kind of professional person or group that would respond and be interested in something like this. And I think we could better educate ourselves as to what we would want following that kind of information or those individuals that would respond to the services they have available.
That's my thought, is this would give us a pool, I guess, of people that may be interested in, in doing something like this. So I think, I think we should move ahead with the RFP, understanding that we're not bound to do anything. You know, once we see the final language of these bills, if they pass.
We're really, you know.
Would there be a job description, Madam Chair, or?
Well, there is a job description that's written, it's in front of you. And there's, there's a couple of question marks on it, so I think those things need to be clarified. But initially, it would just be this RFP that would go out, I think. Is that your intention, Mr. Golden?
So since the commission asked for an RFP or there was discussions about a position, we just drafted both, and we figured you'd give us the directions of what you wanted and how to proceed.
Yeah, one of the concerns I have is, you read the grant administrator position, and I know it's just a first stab, it's just a first draft, I got it. The concern I have is, we're potentially looking for multiple entities here that traditionally don't go with each other. So we're looking for a grant writer. That's pretty standard, pretty basic, I think everybody gets that. This commission in the last year or two has hired grant writers, you know, for example, for the eighty-fifth street project. We, we hired one, didn't get the grant there. But the second prong here of the position summary is somebody who would do ensuring compliance with all grant requirements. You know, I don't know if that's typically in the wheelhouse of the grant writer. You know, you know, my wife works for SDSU, and she's, she oversees as, you know, one of these million-dollar grants for telehealth. Well, she didn't write the grant. SDSU has a professional grant writer who does that. And then the burden usually shifts, so, you know, to a position where an individual then is responsible for administering the grant, and then the burden even further shifts after that to the person, typically legal counsel, accounting, or some of the, you know, professional folks who deal with compliance issues. And so I'm wondering here if maybe we've, and I understand it's just first draft, but are we not narrowing in enough in order to try to find the right entity? I mean, I'm sure there's probably some very large firms out there who could handle all of these different requirements, writing, administering, administering, and compliance. But it seems to me that is not a, and I don't know, could be mistaken, but that's not like a traditional role that, you know, is found in kind of a one-stop shop, if you will. And so I'm wondering if maybe we're, you know, we need to narrow the scope of what we're looking for a little bit here. Seems like we're kind of all across the board, and that's fine, it's just a first stab. But, so that's a concern that I have here. And then it says the position will oversee all aspects of the ARP requirements and funds along with legal counsel and a committee. I, you know, I assume that means they're not overseeing the legal counsel because legal counsel are first state's attorney. I assume they're working with hand in glove. And then it talks about a committee. I don't know, I don't know what the committee is that's being set up here.
So under the ARP funds where is initially set up, which is what we're looking at, was what was required. I believe that in there, they mentioned setting up a committee to review requests. So under, because, you know, federal bureaucracy is always simple to work with, and they don't have red tape. They had a requirement that you have to justify your position, which is basically, we're gonna use the funds in such a way which is similar to grant writing. And then the county, under their system, has to go ahead and administer those funds and then ensure that they get spent in the way that they're supposed to be spent. And then the final requirement was, is that at the end, you have to go through an auditing process which requires, at the end of it, it's basically four years. The county has to come back and say, well, we gave X amount of dollars to this city for water project. Here was our justification for doing it, and then we have to show that it was spent in such a way. So yes, we were trying to cover a whole lot of ground in one. Call it a grant writer when it's probably a grant writer slash administrator slash.
It's a grant czar.
Yeah.
Isn't it?
Yeah, it was, we're covering a whole lot of ground on this one.
So we have not determined if this is a full-time or a part-time position, or if this is a position by salary, or if this is a position that they get paid on if a grant is accepted?
It is a, the intention of the RFP was to try to create, see if there's somebody out there who could go ahead and draft our justification for why we're spending the ARP funds, then would be able to track them and do the reporting for us, and then in the end, assist in the accounting process in four years where we'd have to show the federal government how we spent the money. So that, maybe we need to call it something else, if you, if you want us to be our grant writing czar. But we were trying to cover all those bases in one contract.
Bill, is, is four years, is that sta, is that a standard term?
No, that is.
I guess in my mind, I was thinking more of a two-year term.
Or a one-year. Madam Chair, I, how this all got started is we had eleven million dollars atypical before you would normally apply for a grant and then receive funding. And this, we received the funding, and then we had to figure out what the particulars were, how we can, and make sure that all our I's were dotted and T's were crossed, as they say. Commissioner Schmidt has brought since forth, this started, process started, the idea that the House, Senate, and President may change the rules again on this and then free up how that money can be spent to a point where it basically goes into our general fund and has theoretically a lot less regulatory requirements with it. But it also led then into the conversation as we're having today about the need for grant running as there, we, additional funding as indicated by federal government coming for infrastructure and things like that, and to be prepared for that as well. The initial four-year contract was based on the fact that the ARP funding had a timeframe in which you had to design your plan, implement your plan, and then execute your plan, and that would carry us through the execution and then possibly a little bit farther beyond just in case there was any verification that needed to follow after the execution was completed. So that's where we came up with that timeframe in a synopsis. But I do, on the record, support that we pursue looking into the possibility of acquiring someone that has the expertise in grant writing and execution of grants because I do think that we're coming, large enough county that there's multiple departments. Sheriff Swinson, I'm sure, would love it, given all of the, and he could nod yes to indicate that he would actually like that. Thank you, Sheriff Swinson, assistance in those types of things because his department relies heavily or is fortunate to receive, you know, considerable grant opportunities. And initially, on the reason for the FTE is, under the ARP guidelines, that position would be able to be paid for. So thank you for that.
Well, is ARP, here's my concern, is, is the ARP money gonna pay for this county to have a grant writer who's doing non-ARPU work?
Madam Chair, under what I understand from visiting with a couple of grant writers previous to this getting started, conversation getting started, is the funding for a grant writer was only under the initial ARP guidelines. I don't know, again, we still have an initial million dollars that will have to be implemented, I would think. At least part of that would be, but if it goes outside of the scope of the ARP money, that would not be able to be funded through the ARP money, if that makes sense.
It, it does, Commissioner Poppins, and I, and I think that's what we're trying to get our hands around here is how much of, you know, the position's gonna have to be paid for out of general funds? How much is paid for out of ARP funds? You know, what is the scope of services here? I think a little bit of the confusion is here, is we've got a grant administrator position in front of us here. If you look at the second page, it basically talks, it infers or implies that basically this person would be an in-house employee. And I guess, you know, last week, I was just thinking this was a compliance position, out-of-house, you know, services. Now we're kind of creeping into some other.
Get it both ways.
And I think that's fine, but. My understanding is, if we did an RFP, this is somebody who probably works in a firm or we're trying to solicit the services of a firm, or maybe an individual who's working outside of the county, basically on a contract service basis, right?
I think these, aren't these normally written like it's a percentage of the grant, so that they get paid?
That's my understanding as well.
So I think that, to me, that would be part of negotiating a contract with whoever we wanted to go with. And if we wanted to split out the administrator and a writer position, I wouldn't have any problem with that. If we wanted to do separate RFPs, because I, you know, there's, I certainly think there's some validity to what you're saying that maybe this is too constrictive as far as wanting all of these things in one person.
Madam Chair, I, I said it was, I got confused myself, that's what we're trying to do. I think Commissioner Aaron, you make a lot of good points here. What I thought this grant writer would do would be a grant writer, not an administrator, not an overseer of funds, not an, any of that. It would be a simple contract that if an individual responded and said, I will be your grant writer and you show me what funds are available, I will, or they will find out the rules and submit a grant on our behalf. So that was, that was a very simplistic thing. Now we've added administration to it, we've added the idea that they have to follow up all of this money. If we were to give money to T, how would they would follow up? Well, that's way beyond, in my mind, what a grant writer would do. I mean, their expertise, that to me is an administration thing that would be our responsibility if we gave, let's just say we gave T a million dollars for a sewer project. Okay, there are certain, there are certain covenants that go into that that we have to follow and why we gave, why we gave T a million dollars to do a sewer or water project, okay? It helps, and then we would, our responsibility, as you've said, Bill, is to monitor that, make sure it was spent, how it was spent, guidelines, timelines, all of that kind of stuff is basically our responsibility and connected with that. And when the project is completed, we refound, we respond to that. Now that's, to me, an administration. That is not a grant writer, in my estimation, that's an administrator. So are we wanting somebody to administer the ARP funds? I mean, is that, that our direction? Or are we looking at a grant writer to follow up on any future monies that may become available that would help the county admin, or move forward with the additional funds? I'm on that A or B track.
Madam Chair, it seems like we've got a lot of good questions at this time. I think it's prudent that we, to keep things moving, maybe table this to our next meeting. I would move to the table so we can investigate more of this further and, and maybe have a lot of these questions.
a lot of these questions extrapolated into some answers by our next meeting. So, I would move to table.
All right, I have a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll move on to our 2022 benefits discussion. Good morning, would you state your name and address, please?
Sorry, say that again, please?
Would you state your name and address, please?
Yep, Sean Arnett. Company address is in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Do you need more than that of the address?
What company are you with, Sean?
Yeah, Hayes Companies.
Thanks.
Been working from home so long, you caught me off guard there for a second. Well, if I had to use my work address for a while. Well, thank you for having me, Commissioners. Always a pleasure being back here. Before I move into the presentation, kind of set the stage here, you know, last year at this time, when I was here, we were in a little different position. We were forced to market your health insurance plans. You're with Health Partners. They are providing a quite significant increase to your plan over about a 21% increase. Through a marketing process, we were able to negotiate that down based on market leverage. It brought it down to an eight percent, which is about, well, it's a significant savings. However, with the marketing, as you're all aware, we, you made the decision to move United Healthcare, change plan designs and offer a dual-choice plan. By doing that, it took that 21% down to basically a flat, but with a new carrier. So, that leads us into this year, which puts us in a whole different position. Move here, oh, this way, all right. So, quickly here is a reminder who your administrators are for your health insurance and other benefits. United Healthcare then took over as last year, or I'm sorry, for this current year, for your health insurance benefits. Delta Dental of South Dakota is currently your dental administrator. IMED for Vision and MetLife would be for the base life administration. We did not go out to market this year for a couple of reasons. During that negotiations with United Healthcare last year, we were able to also negotiate what we figured would be a very favorable rate cap, and that was a not to exceed nine percent. So, we knew at the worst-case scenario going into 2022, your health insurance would go up to nine percent. And on this screen, I'm glad you have it in front of you, so you don't need your readers here, that is initially what United Healthcare did come in at. They came in at a nine percent for both plans, both your traditional co-pay and your high deductible health plan. In working with United Healthcare, we wanted to see how we could get that a little lower based on your current claims utilization. And just to give you some numbers, you know, when I was here last year, we looked at the, the prior year's loss ratio. And the loss ratio simply is this, it's what the carrier is getting in premiums compared to what they're paying out in claims. In 2018, your loss ratio was 151%. In 2019, it was 141%. Basically, what that tells you is the carrier was losing a lot of money, hence the high increase from Health Partners at the beginning of this year. However, 2020 ended more favorably. 2020 ended with a 91.96% loss ratio. And then 2021 is starting to trend more favorable. We were able to use that, along with some other data, to actually work with United Healthcare to bring that nine percent down to a six. So, keeping plan designs as is, would be a six percent increase. That is over current, that's before any contributions, that's total plan cost, okay? Again, that's no plan design changes. We did also, based on some information that we received from Julia, just feedback from employees on plan design, there was one issue that we knew coming into this plan as well with United Healthcare and the traditional co-pay plan, was around labs and x-rays. With Health Partners, if you went in to get an x-ray of your ankle, you sprained your ankle, you're getting some lab, some blood work, there was no charge for that. On United Healthcare's plan, it was. It was subject to deductible and then co-insurance. So, that six percent would keep it the way it is. Knowing that, we did go back to United Healthcare and said, well, what if we added that in? What if we got that benefit changed back to the way it was with Health Partners, the way your employees were used to, and have that lab and x-ray at a no charge? And you can see at the bottom here, under the green, it would increase that to an 8.7%. So, still under the rate cap of nine, still a favorable to trend, but a little higher, obviously, than the six. Now, you also see a little lower increase here on the HDHP, the high deductible health plan. And where this came from is, United Health Group has a program in their HDHP plans called Motion. And what Motion does, it allows people to earn money into their HSA accounts by doing certain wellness activities, walking so many times per day, so many steps per day, and they can earn the money. At the time of the renewal, and I still believe to this day, Julie, you got the last report, there's only been one person enrolled in that plan. So, in looking at that, if we were to remove just that benefit, the motion, the wellness motion from the HDHP plan, it actually brings that cost down to an overall increase of 4.49%. So, as an alternate for your, for your consideration, is to change the traditional co-pay plan, enhance it by making that lab and x-ray benefit more rich, and then by removing that motion benefit, that wellness benefit on the HDHP plan, would bring it to about an 8.11% renewal. So, I'll take you through how those look. If we look at the six percent, no plan design changes, it's a cost share between the county and the employees. Whoops, over here on your left in the blue are your current costs, and then over here in the orange would be the six percent increased cost. I'm going to focus on the upper line here first. This yellow line are the employee contributions. So, employer, employee today is paying the 234. With that six percent, it would go up to the 248. Then over here to the far right is what that cost increase would be per month, okay? That's the traditional co-pay plan. This would be the, the HDHP plan. We have to take a snapshot in time to project. So, if we just make the assumption, and it will not come true, but if we make the assumption that everyone's going to stay enrolled in the same plan, in the same tier, after contributions, the six percent increase to the county would be roughly $66,000. This slide here is simply showing the two plans you have today in the orange. The left is your traditional co-pay plan, the right is the high deductible health plan. The middle is really just showing that one plan design change, that alternate, changing it from a deductible co-insurance to a no change. And then if we apply that, now we have two different contribute, or two different increases. The traditional, as we mentioned up here, is over an eight percent increase. The high deductible is at 4.49. So, again, if we make the assumption that everyone stays in the same plan and the same tier with coverage, then it's a 8.11% increase to the county. One thing I do like to provide on a, on a yearly basis, too, when we look at plan designs, yeah, I'm in HR, you all see the numbers, but we also know there's more to it. It's what employees pay out of their pocket, not just from premiums, but what they pay out in co-pays, co-insurance, and deductibles. And sometimes when we look at plan designs with a deductible such as yours, for example, of a thousand dollars, our eyes say, wow, that's a high deductible. I like to dig into your plan and say, really, what are your employees paying? So, over the last three plan years, you can see, full plan years, 2020 on top, 19 and 18, is really what the member liability has been. And what this does is it actually breaks out how much members have paid, and we, we do it by level here. And as you can see, we highlighted in green, you have 81.1% of your covered members pay less than a thousand dollars in a plan year. That equates to 20% of, of all member paid. Seventy-eight percent the year before, sixty-nine. Again, so, we like to put some perspective in it, and, and it's always tough, I'm a utilizer, we're all utilizers, to say, you know, you're only paying so much. But it is good to know for a plan that has a, about an average deductible level of a single thousand dollars on a co-pay plan, that the majority of your members aren't even hitting that amount. We move into the dental renewal?
Would you mind?
Yeah, absolutely.
Could I interrupt you?
Please.
Just let me digest the screen just for a second?
If you have questions, please, please let me know. And these are the combined plans. I'm sorry, take it back. This would have been, these are single plans, because this is the first year you had a dual-plan choice, so these would be your Health Partner plans.
Would you go back to a previous slide, please, sir?
Yes.
On what the actual cost to the employee would be?
So, on this alternate plan design, so this is the one where it enhances that traditional co-pay plan and removes that motion. The top level, the top section here, is that traditional co-pay. So, I highlighted the yellow, and that would be the members' responsibility, their premium. So, today, they're paying the 234. And I apologize, my eyes aren't that great anymore.
That's for a single person?
Yeah, that's for a single, and then we go to employee plus spouse here. Employee plus child and family. And so, to see what the impact is, Commissioner, if you go to the far right, that is the per month. So, the single would go up to 2034. You see the employee plus spouse per month, employee plus child and family.
So, a family plan, currently, they're paying 700 and, or 800 dollars?
Yep, 795, yep.
And with the increase, that would go to what?
Right here, that I'm circling.
That'd go to 864.
Sixty-four, correct.
So, it's about a sixty, about a sixty, sixty dollars, sixty-five dollar a month more for a family.
Yep, and that's to your far, far right, that I'm kind of circling there. You got it.
Okay.
Yep.
With this motion program, I take it it's not too popular here in Lincoln County?
You, you know, it's, it's interesting. I was with another client who implemented UH, United Healthcare this year, so for 2022. And it's a relatively newer program for United Healthcare, not to go too much off, off-topic. In the past, the big thing was carriers would try to provide fitness reimbursements if you went to a gym. It was so underutilized, and the, the voices out there were saying, well, we want more, we don't go to the gym, we walk, we swim, we do weights. So, carriers are pulling away from that fitness club, so reimbursements. And this is what carriers are trying to do, different type of program. So, the motion is, hey, if you get up and you do 300 steps, six times a day, an hour apart, we'll give you a dollar. If you get 3,000 steps in a day, we'll give you a dollar. If you get 10,000 steps in a day, we'll give you a dollar. It, it's the way to encourage the, the movement. It's a newer program, but it has not had an uptake here in, in Lincoln County in the first year. And it has been promoted, I think, Julie, I think several UHC as well has put out those promotional materials, but I don't know if you've heard anything from employees at all on those?
Yeah, of the 13 people that utilize the high deductible plan, only one employee utilizes the motion program. So, I haven't received any feedback other than that, but at any rate, it's not being utilized.
And then another question I had, Sean, is, if you go up, can you go down on the slides?
Yep.
Right, right there?
Yeah.
Is that just for our, under member medical liability there?
Yep.
Yep. Is that just for our employees, or is this for their family members?
Yep, covered members. All participants, so we call it belly button. So, anyone who has had a claim, of these 109 here, it says it goes down to a dollar, I can, unfortunately, we can't break it out on a group of your size, I can guarantee you, there's a portion that has had zero. And we see that in every plan. So, yeah, these are unique members. Great question. Any other questions about the medical? Should I move on? Okay. Dental is pretty boring this year because it's no change. In the plan design, no change in the networks, it's still Delta Dental of South Dakota. Rates are going up 4.61%. So, I will show you how that plays out here. Whoops, well, it's a voluntary, I'm sorry, it's a voluntary plan, so it's a 4.61% to members. Benefits are not changing, the level of benefits that are available today will be tomorrow. One thing I would like to point out is what Delta Dental of South Dakota does provide in their fully insured contracts here in South Dakota. Those are three programs, Prevention Pays, Health Through Oral Wellness, and you also have the maximum bonus account. So, Prevention Pays is simply this, it takes those monies that used to apply towards the annual maximum allowed, and it removes the preventative services from that, from that. And what that's meant to do is provide more money available to individuals to get larger cost services throughout the year, root canals, fillings, implants, similar to that. The Health Through Oral Wellness is a relatively newer program through South, Delta Dental. And what that is, is about 70% of Delta Dental dentists are currently doing these programs, the, the Health Through Oral Wellness. When a member goes in towards their cleaning, they get a severity test, and it's a simple exam by the dentist. And based on the, the risk and severity, members can actually receive additional benefits at no cost, cleaning, sealants, periodontal maintenance, and fluoride. Again, this is something that Delta Dental provides. And then the maximum bonus account, again, there are a few caveats. If employees utilize their preventive exams, if they still have money at the end of the year in their allowed amount, they can move over $250 to the new plan year. Again, just programs to try to continue to promote oral health, okay? Those are a senior program today, they'll be in there tomorrow.
One, one question before we move on, sir. The average family to cover the Delta Dental plan is a yearly total of what?
The, so it's 142, 16.
A month.
Month, per month, yep.
Thank you.
Yep. And again, there's no change from what that is today. Vision, there is absolutely no change to design or rates. You're currently in a four-year rate guarantee, and that's going to be good through 2023. So, those rates will not be changing, that's zero, for the same plan design.
What was that again, Sean?
So, the IMED Vision, when we, when we implemented this, they provided a four-year rate cap, and that rate cap will extend through 12, or 2023. And so, there's no change on current rates. Those rates will be good through 2023.
So, you, the employee here, if they have a family, is going to pay 22 bucks a month?
2255, yes, sir. And again, the benefits, we always like to put it in there just for your reference, are not changing. Life in AD&amp;D, so accidental death and dismemberment life through MetLife. This was an interesting renewal in that when we initially put the base life in, it was off-cycle, I believe it was an October renewal. We were able to get MetLife to extend that, so it synced up with everything else on 1-1s. Furthermore, they pushed it out through 2022 at a no rate change. So, based on your current volumes for your group life and your group AD&amp;D, those rates here per thousand are not changing for 2022. So, no changes to your, to the cost of the county for that. And if we roll everything up, if we look at the medical, we look at the dental, the vision, and the life insurance, we break it out into three sections. The top section would be total plan expenses, so this is before any contributions are taken. Middle section is the staff costs, so what they would contribute to those plans, and the bottom would be the county costs. Now, I'll focus on that real quick. The first line is the same for each section, current annual costs. So, again, we have to take a snapshot of what people are enrolled in today, assuming they'll be enrolled in the same thing tomorrow. With your United Healthcare plan today, about 1.1 million to the, to the county. Initial projected renewal, that was at nine percent. Negotiated renewal, we got down to that six percent, so that'd be a 1.16 million. And then the alternate, which would be, again, enhancing the, the traditional co-pay plan and removing the motion benefit on the HDHP, is a 1.19. The county does not contribute to the dental or vision. Again, there is no change on the base life in AD&amp;D. So, if we add up the portfolio of benefits to the county, today, a projected cost, right here, based on the initial renewal, 1.2 million or up 8.96%. That negotiated renewal, the six percent on the medical, when you blend in the, the additional cost of base life and AD&amp;D, 66,000 or 5.9% increase. Or if you go with the alternative, 89,000, just over an eight percent increase, which I always like to compare it to trend. We talk about trend in a medical sense, what the cost of goods and services are today to what they'll be tomorrow. Trend in this area could be anywhere between seven and a half and eight and three quarters. Your whole portfolio of benefits are coming in, two options, well under at a six, or right at at about an eight.
Sean, what's an employee with a family going to pay out of pocket on premiums for all programs put together?
I, I'd have to put that to you.
12,354 dollars.
If they, you're talking about if they have a medical dental vision?
The total bill to a employee that has a family for all of this benefits, for their health insurance, vision, and dental, the way I got it down was 10,380 for their life, or for the health insurance, 1704 for dental, and 270 for vision, bringing you to 12,354 dollars.
For the complete package. Are there any other questions?
I guess my question is for Julia. Julia, did you do a survey of employees on these different variations?
Yes, so, all employees that currently utilize the health insurance were sent out a survey, that is, that's 89 individuals. For those that elect the traditional plan, it came out exactly as 50/50 as of this morning. So, 28 people are in favor of the six percent, 28- So twenty-eight people are in favor of the six percent, twenty-eight in favor of the eight point seven percent increase. Of the high deductible individuals that participate in that plan design, the vast majority, one of four point five percent.
Which would be removing the motion program.
Right.
It is something, I should say, later on, if there is interest in getting that at another plan year, if motion's still around, it's not something that you can only have once. It can be added back in, obviously, you can see there'd be a cost in the premiums as well.
You know, what was it, a year or two ago, we did the health promotion program? Am I using the right terminology for that?
The wellness program?
The wellness program.
Yeah, we still utilize that.
We still do that. And how well, what's the participation level in that?
Good, so about fifty percent, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Fifty percent of our staff members participate in that, so those that participate and meet the requirements are eligible for a fifty-dollar reduction, premium reduction each month.
And we can at another time or send that information, because I know you just received a quarterly update, I believe, last quarter from the wellness. You know, it's too early to make a correlation here, but I do look, again, those numbers I gave you from twenty eighteen, when you're at a hundred fifty-one percent loss ratio, down to right now, today, in twenty twenty-one through July, you're running a seventy-three percent, you are trending favorably. Obviously, that's one of the reasons we were able to reduce that, nine down to a six, normally you don't reduce rate cap, carriers won't do that. We'd like to attribute some of that to the wellness program, because there has been, there have been some good success stories through the wellness programs, some employees sharing their success. So again, continued promotion of that participation to try to gear that up above fifty percent, we would hope continue that favorable trend as well.
So the hope is for the commission to make a decision on how to move forward with that. And then we can have open enrollment hopefully on Monday for the next two weeks.
Julia, what has been the response from staff as far as the coverage and the response they get? Are they satisfied with the insurance they have and what it covers? Or have you had complaints about it?
The vast majority of the feedback I get is they would like more rich coverage. The diagnostic testing was huge, and that's why I brought that to Sean's attention, so he could provide that with, for an option. The other feedback I get is insurance is extremely expensive, but that's not news to anyone.
So is the diagnostic testing better covered in the alternative plan?
Yeah, yep, that's the change, yeah.
Well, today, you know, you don't really have a choice. If you, if you are in an emergency room situation, or if you're in a illness situation, they run every test that they can conceive. And they'll, you know, and for the average family that may not have that kind of coverage, I mean, this gets to be a pretty serious situation and can cause pretty much a financial hardship on the family. So the question is, how do you, how do you get the maximum of coverage for, you know, the least amount of price? Because when you've got employees that are spending a thousand bucks a month on insurance, that's quite a chunk, given, given the salaries situation. And the competition, and this must over, if you read the story today, retailers are offering a thousand bucks just for people to come here and to come to work, and not counting the bonuses. So I'm looking at our staff and figuring out, okay, how do, how do we provide them with the best amount of coverage we can and lessen the impact on their financial, on their salary situation? So I, I don't know, I, this, this should, probably, we should take more time and really dive down into this thing and see if there's some way that we can, not that you haven't, sir, I'm not disputing that. But I'm just thinking that to listen to what the staff has to say, and, you know, if you're at fifty-fifty, we don't have any, you know, consistency. I mean, fifty percent want one way, fifty percent want another, is there a compromise in here? Is there some way that we can level this thing off? I don't know.
Sean, so you heard that number Commissioner Schmidt said, basically, if you, if you work here and you've got a family, it's going to run you about twelve thousand bucks a year
Yep.
in premiums. Where does that sit with, you know, the folks around us here, different counties, the cities, the?
Yeah.
I could tell you, with border regions employees, it's about the same.
Yeah, and it's interesting, Julie and I had a conversation about this yesterday, earlier in the year, I provided her with some benchmarking, and one of the things we do is, you know, we look at the studies and we try to break it down to, you know, small employers, governmental municipalities and whatnot. The one thing you don't know and knows is who's responding. And the comment was also, local, what you just mentioned, Commissioner. You know, you have your Minnehaha County, right, we have Sioux Falls School District, you have the city of Sioux Falls, that I know she's looked at. The problem is, when you do that, is those are much larger clients, obviously, you know that, those are much larger groups. They're self-funded groups, they have a much bigger risk pool to spread that. So when you have some higher claims, it affects you more. Now, with that in consideration, is you're a small group, what it means is your claims are not a hundred percent credible. I underwrite our groups, I could not underwrite your group, say, this is what I project your claims to be and be accurate, you're not statistically credible. And so what carriers will do, doesn't matter which carrier, if it's a Sanford, a Health Partners, an Avera, a United, they're going to blend you. They're going to take your demographics, they're going to take your claims, they're going to provide a certain weight to that. And then they're going to blend you with their pool of other small groups. So if you're running extremely healthy, but their pool is horrible, you're not going to get as good as if you were a large group on yourself. So to get to your questions, Commissioner, it's a tough way to, it's a tough answer to say, other like entities around you, unless I had other small county data available.
You're saying it's not Apple Store, it's not Apple Store?
Not if we're looking at a large county like Minnehaha, if we're looking at, you know, the city of Sioux Falls, it's not even close to.
So we're too small a group?
Well, it's not that you're too small of a group, it's just how it's rated in your risk pool. Again, if I have a group of five thousand employees and I have a couple of high claimants, it's a drop in the bucket, we expect it. We still expect your group to have high claimants, but they're going to sway those numbers a little bit more. Now, again, that's part of our job. Again, we knew we had a rate cap that we negotiated, nine percent, based on your past numbers, that would have been very favorable. But because you're trending more favorably, even though you're not credible, we use that data, we use that information to say, they are trending in the right direction significantly. Let's take that rate cap, we know it was kind of a lock, but let's see if we can get that down, and we got that down to below trend.
Let me make, maybe ask my question a little differently. I don't know if it'll make you answer differently. If I'm an employee and I'm shopping around for where I want to work?
Yeah.
And I say, well, if I'm going to work in Lincoln County, I'm going to pay twelve thousand out of my pocket, take care of me and my family. But if I work at this other place, I'm going to pay X. Well, I know what the number is for the border regions, because my wife works for them. But are we competitive or not?
On a benchmarking standpoint, if I were to squint, because I remember benchmarking, we could be talking large groups mixed in with small groups, we talk about government. You're actually right in about benchmark with plan design and cost. You're a little low, I'm sorry, a little high on the individual, so when we were talking yesterday about benchmark, this has been a twenty twenty Mercer survey data. The average in government was about a fifteen percent cost share on premium for single, but right at twenty-eight percent where you're at for family. Now, one thing is, surveys don't look at four tiers like you are. If they did rate for four tiers, they did survey for four tiers, those numbers have a little bit bigger spread, so we would expect that single to go up a little bit. At the same time, it's also twenty twenty data, so we'd expect it to be a little bit. So on contributions, you're a little higher than average. Benchmark, on plan design, you're actually right in there. And that's why we, and again, to your point, you can't really tell us to an employee, you couldn't tell us to me, and I know the data, it's tough. But that's why I think it's important to know that the majority of the employees aren't hitting that number, like the thousand dollars, for example, the deductible for a single. But on a fully insured plan of your size, we could make it richer, we could drop the deductible down, but as you know, the carriers are going to raise the premium, so it's just a cost shift. Often it comes down to, as well, it's the employer's contribution, in this case, the county's contribution, that's usually level one. Benefit designs, number two, is what we usually hear in surveys, from employer groups.
Now, with regard to, same question with regard to employer contribution, where are we at in the mix here locally?
I'd have to get local data, I can tell you, if the groups I work, which is quite a few, again, it's a mix. I have a group that's just slightly larger than you, also fully insured, is actually pays less, so you're richer than them. But I have some larger groups, they're self-funded, they're a bigger risk pool, the employer contributes quite a bit more. Again, so what we have to look at is that benchmark in the region, and then in the small employer field, and then in the government area. And that, again, you're a little high, like I said, on employee contribution, but really right in there on family contribution.
Are there any counties in South Dakota here who join with other counties to create larger risk pools?
Yeah, I think you asked, a couple of years ago, when I first met you, you asked that as well, and we've looked into it, I even talked to Wellmark, for example, to see if they've been approached by anyone. And I know it's, it's an attempt, I know people have attempted to, we've even looked into it. It's not as easy as just saying, let's join, there are a lot of loopholes you have to do because of requirements, associations, MEWAs. Even though you're the same entities, as far as, you know, your municipalities, you're not print, there's no organizational ownership, so it's a little difficult. It's something that we actually at Haze are continuing to look at, we're also doing it for rural hospitals, looking at the same type. And what we've come to, which we hope to maybe even try to reach out to smaller counties at some point, it's not necessarily joining the same plan, it's creating a pool to bring multiple counties to a carrier, to say you have to take them all or none, you each have your own underwriting, you each have your own rates and design, but we'd hope to get trade-offs from the carrier for lower costs, because they're bringing in that larger risk pool, if that makes sense.
I just did a MEWAs for a private client, it's mind-boggling.
MEWAs are, well, it's interesting, in South Dakota, they used to be illegal. We had a client hazed it eight years ago, we actually worked with the state to overturn that and allow it, but it's only allowed in South Dakota. Our client was national, so we could do the MEWAs here in Iowa. Yeah, MEWAs are allowed within very, very, very strict parameters, correct. Associations, we thought were going to get more lenient, under the Trump administration, it started to, and that kind of faltered. So it's still pretty strict to do different groups of no ownership.
Thank you.
It's a great question, though.
Sir, for municipalities that choose there, do they have an access to a larger pool base? Because I'm thinking of communities that pay probably one hundred percent of their employees' benefits. And their, you know, their pool would be very small, because, so, any reflections on that? Are they, does a municipal league, for example, have a combined pool that they use for all these communities, or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of, not that I'm aware of.
So they just, they just decide that this is a benefit that they want to give their employees, and they will bear the cost?
Correct, and I'm speaking of all the public entities that I work with, a few here in South Dakota, yeah, there is no pool that we've ever been made aware of, I wish there was. But it's just their, when I say their, the employer's decision, this is what we're going to provide, this is what we can take on.
This may be an unfair question, but you, we're over on, on the one end, on the amount of contributions made by employees. If we were to bring that down to the average or even below, have any idea on what, how much that would be, how, if on a cost for us?
We can always model it, whoops, we go to the direction, we can always model these percentages. Now, without getting into a real long conversation for you all, what we like to do at Haze, even though you're fully insured, is we have a thing called risk pool management, it has several variables. But one of them is to make sure everyone's paying their fair share. We know that when carriers provide rates to groups, they want more bodies, that's how they make money. So they're going to lower the cost of a family coverage, but they're going to increase the cost of a single, it's a zero-sum game for them. So one thing we do is work with the carriers on full insured plans to make sure when you bring those rates out to us, that the cost of a family is fair in relative to the cost of a single, single's one, baseline. Whole actual process, we go through that. United Healthcare recognizes what we do there, and so rather than doing a backend, what we used to do, actually, for the county several years ago here, rather than doing a backend, well, here's the premiums, but we're going to set contributions off of different numbers, United took our numbers. And so a family might be four times the cost of a single, I'd have to go back and look. What I'm getting at is, so each plan, that's why we have a full twenty-eight percent here and a twenty-eight percent here, we're not steering anyone to a plan, and we're not subsidizing. To answer your question in a long, roundabout way, is, one of the variables is, on average, over time, you want those singles. A lot of times, we'll look at the people who waived, but why did they waive? Well, do they have other coverage, are they young and they think they're invincible? Because on average, over time, those young singles pay you premium, they don't have a lot of claims, they make your plan younger, which results in lower premiums. So one of the philosophies, one of the variables is, we want to lower that single cost. Now, we don't want to lower it and subsidize, now, that's a philosophy, I'm talking from a finance standpoint, it's also the HR recruiting retention, right? But yes, that would be favorable over time to bring in those younger, younger singles, to have them on the plan. What it would cost the county, that would be a crystal ball moment. What we would do is, we would say, okay, how many waivers do you have, what percentage do we think we could get? And what number, you would want to drop this percent down, because that's a simple calculation, if I change that twenty-eight to a twenty-five, it'll go through the math and let us know what that cost would be.
Yeah, one of the things we've always had, you know, is to keep singles in, because they are the ones that balance or cut down. And if they're not there, and you have families with the number of claims they have, and that's why, number of claims versus the pool that we have, that's why the numbers reflect the numbers.
Again, and you're trending the better way, but you are dead on on that, is if you do have a larger pool, and that larger pool is healthier, and most of us are going to be single, when they are, you're going to have, on average, over time, you're not going to have a roller coaster trend line, you're going to have a more flat line.
So if we chose to, if the commission was to look at their, look at the future, and they wanted to say to our, to our employees, well, the burden that you have, and I'm not, I'm just using this as an example, for our, part of our package to work here, if we said, well, your insurance costs are a little high, we're going to reduce your yearly average to ten thousand dollars, just tossing numbers out. And the commission then would have to put that in, that absorb that additional two thousand dollars per family or per employee, and that would be kind of a perk or a benefit they have. Because I look at, I look at around, and I'm very concerned about the number of jobs that we have in Sioux Falls, which are approaching seven thousand, and the amount of increases that they are awarding to individuals, that we maintain a competitive place for them to work, and we don't lose employees, because when you start talking about twenty to twenty percent increases in some salaries, government can only absorb so much, and so.
No, and absolutely, and one of the things that we look to, especially for our rural clients, whether rural hospitals, clinics, counties, what it may be, is sometimes it's HR on feedback, they're getting from both recruits, why they didn't take the job or what they're looking for, but also exit interviews. You know, that's one of our biggest things when we talk about benchmarks, because that's more speaking to local. And so if we have feedbacks such as that, I don't know if we've had really any, a lot on the benefits, we'd want to take action on that. But you do speak to a good point on, again, I'm talking financial, but if I put on the recruitment retention HR hat, it's a, it's a whole different concept. So it's where do you meet in the middle? Is it dropping some rates here to retract and retain and keep it younger, hopefully keep those premiums down over time?
Okay.
All right, on the, on the survey that you did, was it the diagnostic testing that was the reason that those fifty percent of the employees wanted the alternative plan?
Yeah, that's the only difference, and that's the large majority of the feedback I'm getting, is that's cost them more money out of pocket because of those tests.
So, I mean, that's like mammograms, that's everything they were having to pay twenty percent on?
Uh, I don't think we have mammograms, because I think that would fall into preventive, but I use the example, if I rolled my ankle right now and I had to go into the doctor's office, and the doctor's office says, well, let's go get an X-ray of that, that X-ray would not be covered in my copay for the office, that X-ray would be a deductible and co-insurance, it would cost me more out of pocket than it did previous years. So that's where you are today on that diagnostic test, same with lab and blood work. We did go to UHC to ask if they could pull some data, it's really tough for them to pull, because sometimes how, it depends on how a clinic bills, the codes. Sometimes that code will be separate, sometimes it will not, lab work, like blood work is a lot different. But as far as the membership on the plan, it was darn close to about a third, maybe a little bit more than that, that have had so far this year, a cost because of they've gone in for a diagnostic, either X-ray. They have had so far this year a cost because of they've gone in for a diagnostic, either X-ray.
Does anybody have any other questions right now? What's everybody want to do?
Question, if, if we were to absorb the cost, the increased cost, any idea what that would? And, and keep the regular plan, but add this added feature that people like, what would be the cost to the county if we absorbed that?
So I want to ask a clarifying question. Are you talking about the full increase? Or are you talking about the difference between the six? So we're talking about just that one plan, the co-pay plan for the diagnosis, okay? So again, if we keep the plan as is today, before contributions, 6%, so it's about a $78,000 change, call it 79, okay? The difference between that and making it richer, we're talking about what is 30, about $40,000.
So $40,000, the county would increase expense by $40,000. The benefits would go directly to cover?
Well, what it would do is, if I'm reading you right, Commissioner, is we would accept this plan here, the 8.7. But if I'm hearing you right, what you're saying, though, is only pass along to the employee the 6. Is that correct?
Yeah. You keep, they would keep their regular one, and they would have this added feature that would increase that to 8%, okay?
Well, it wouldn't be just the fee. They'd get that whole new plan design, but you're right. There's only that one change in the new plan design, correct. But again, if I'm hearing you right, you're saying pass along to them the 6, which is no change. But we're going to take the change plan, which is an 8.7. The commissioner is going to take the additional 2.7% or about $40,000. Or, I'm sorry, county, yep.
And how much would that actually be in, was it 40,000?
Well, it'd be, it'd be about $40,000.
About $40,000.
Yeah.
Where would that put us in terms of a benchmark with other agencies, then? That put us way above?
On which, on which benchmark item, on plan design or cost?
With regard to cost contribution?
Well, your cost is still, again, you, when you look at benchmark surveys, you're looking at percentages. Because again, plans vary so much from cost, the actual dollar amount. So what percentage of premium is the employee paying? And that would still be at the 20, and actually, no, I take that back because that would drop the employees down to a, it'd still be a 28% of, I'm sorry, a 28% cost. It's just their overall cost would be lower because they're paying 28% of a 6% increase and not of an 8.7.
I mean, do we have any data to support this notion that the county needs to increase its cost contribution in order to?
Just, highly speaking, I mean, if you're going to compare Lincoln County premiums compared to many, haha, to the city of Sioux Falls, state of South Dakota, our premiums, brass tacks, are higher. Now, there's another element that plays into that is the coverage, of course, and Sean went over that. But if you're just talking cost perspective, our premiums are higher than some of our other competitors.
By how much? What are we talking, $10 a month or $200 a month?
It depends on what tier level.
Okay. So what about for each tier, then?
This is off memory. Off my analysis, it's probably at least 50 bucks a month. In my experience.
We don't have any current data for that? That's just kind of what you ran into in the past?
I did high-level data, yes. I mean, just my own research that I did for this conversation, should it come up? But to Sean's point, what I've been hearing in exit interviews and my experience with the job market as it is, our benefits, the premium costs are high. But with all of that said, we're kind of in a debacle, right? It's because we have such a small pool. So from a strategic standpoint, what would the commission like to do? Would you like to offer more cost or a bigger benefit? It's just what, what you'd like to do. Or both. And I'm going to cut you off if you want to do more.
You know, I don't, I don't know. For instance, when I was over in Turner County, and I know it's a smaller pool, they paid the employee's single cost, and then they actually set it, the deductibles higher. And then once they met, once an employee had paid so much out of pocket, they would actually reimburse that employee for a part of their deductible.
Yep.
To make, to lower the overall premium costs and to get those younger, single employees in and covered. Just, that's what they did to lower costs. I don't know if that's still what they're doing.
Yeah, so you're talking like an HRA, it's called a corridor, where an employee will pay so much out of pocket, and we're talking about benefit design. And then the employer will kick in the next, and then the employer will kick in over that. And there's several ways to, to structure that. And this is exactly why we look at data like this, because that corridor would be so small for you all. Again, because again, the majority, 80, almost 81%, are paying even less than the single deductible is. And so we could, but you, what we get it as, you wouldn't get a lot of premium savings from that. In, in the, the window dressing would be, hey, if you hit 1,000, we'll pay the next X. The majority aren't going to be hitting that. So really, what you're favoring at that point are people that are going over that amount.
Sean, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
When you say that the employees paid less than $1,000, what does that $1,000 consist of? Because I know employees that pay a lot more than that with the diagnostics that they've had to pay lately.
So this would be, so this is out of pocket. So in 20, this is 2020. Keep in mind, I mentioned, this would be.
Oh, so we're not in 2021 yet?
Yep. So in 2020, you had 201 members that received service. So belly, that's belly button. So employees, spouse, dependents. Of those 201, we put them into categories of how much employees spent, what level they went up to. And so you had whatever number this is, if we add this up, it's 81% that received services in 2020. Now, this is not premiums. This would be plan design. So co-pays, coinsurance, deductibles, they paid less than $1,000 out of pocket. Or up to, we could say, if you want to say that, up to. 54% paid less than $250. So that's what this looks at. And it's not to say, oh, we want to punish people who are spending more than that. It's not that at all, that we're going to raise out of pockets. It's to say, we want to be fair and equitable. I could lower the deductible, the out-of-pocket, to favor them, the ones that, you know, the small percentage, the 7%, the 13%, but what that's going to do is raise premiums on everyone. So we tried to make the plan as fair and equitable for the entire population.
So have you done a projection as to what the audit cost is for this year?
We, this, we can't do it until the plan year is ended. I mean, this is actual claims.
Right.
So we can't get claims data like this until a plan year ends.
You can't do a projection.
We, we did ask UHC, as I mentioned, to see, hey, through, I think it was June at the time, how many people on the traditional co-pay plan has received a diagnostic and/or blood work? The way blood work is coded, UHC said they really can't pull that by itself on the, on the X-rays. It was about a third, and I don't have the total number. I believe, Julia, maybe we can forward that, because I know we have that report from UHC. I would say about a third of the members that received service have had or have paid towards a diagnostic.
Yeah, because I actually asked my doctor not to do tests.
Yeah, we don't want, we don't want that to happen. Now, keep in mind, too, there's two types. I want to be really clear on this. When we talk about diagnostic, we say X-rays. There's two different types. If I'm going to get an MRI, a PET, a CAT scan, that is not diagnostic. Those never have been. Those are right here. Those are under imaging. So if I go in for an MRI, or my son just went in for a CAT scan, every plan's going to be deductible coinsurance on that. If I'm going into my doctor's office and he says, hey, we need to run a cholesterol blood work, or we need to get, you know, X-ray your ankle because you sprained it, those are the imagines that we're talking about that are right now, used to be no charge.
Biopsies, for instance, would be diagnostic.
Ah, biopsy, it's a good question on how that would be coded. I'd have to see what the ICD-10 code is on that, Commissioner. A biopsy could be coded. Again, we're not talking preventive. We're talking, I've been just diagnostic testing, which is coded as X-ray or lab work, which is usually a.
That would be considered diagnostic.
Yeah, which is a.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's so many employees here. So you're saying what pushed these employees over the edge was this diagnostic testing change. So there must have been, these, whoever these employees are that came into you and participated in your survey, they must have had specific things in their mind that made them say, I don't like the current plan the way it is because something particular happened to them.
And it was a change from last year. We were very clear. We made that known during the meetings last year that by going to UHC for this year, that was, although there were some plan enhancements, that was the major takeaway. You know, we did, and so we kind of knew that would happen. We see a lot of fully insured plans, unfortunate carriers going this route, you know, the deductible coinsurance on it, but that was a change. So we knew there would be some disruption, and we made that clear. But yeah, it does sound like that's, of the noise that has been passed from Julia onto us, it was around that one.
Well, I think as an employer, we want those employees to get those diagnostic tests if they need to be done. And if it's for a family, what, $70 or so for a month for the employee? I mean, $70 goes along. That doesn't go far when it comes to diagnostic testing, is my, is my guess, that it would pay for itself for the employee if they would need that service. I guess that's kind of where I'm at, is the alternative plan. I, we need to do something on this. What is everybody else's thoughts?
I guess I'm just, well, two things. I am surprised, and I'm not surprised, people don't want to participate in the motion program.
Yeah.
They could put money in their pockets simply by walking steps if they wanted to. I get it. Personal preference. It's one of those, well, it's another wellness activity. And I'm also surprised about the wellness participation rate of 50%. I mean, I'm wondering what, why don't the other participants, why don't our other employees jump in to save, it was $50 a month on their premium? You know, so if you're, you know, so Commissioner Schmidt, I hope you'd join with me. I'll go around to every single employee and say, who's not enrolled yet, is, I really think you ought to get $50 off your premium if you would sign up for the wellness program, right? They, they have the power themselves to lower their premium, and they're not doing it for a variety of reasons. Maybe some good, some bad, some indifferent. Totally understand. It's their healthcare. It's very private. It's very personal. But, you know, we're talking about the county wanting, you're talking about the county wanting to pay more. I'm saying to myself, these people have the power themselves to change their premium, and they're not doing it.
I don't necessarily argue with you at all, Commissioner Aaron's, on that. I find that wellness is a, is a responsibility. I think that everybody has to do that. And I think, Julia, you have provided lots of exercises or programs or whatever. But if you had, if you had a, if you had a menu of the activities that someone would do. So let's say that, pull something out of the air, that if an employee would walk around the courthouse two times a day, just throwing something out, up and down, that that would count as a wellness activity, okay? So that's, that's it. And if that would be, the alternative would be that you would lower your healthcare costs to yourself because you're in a health, because you're in a wellness program, I don't see why they wouldn't want to do that. Now, there may be limitations because somebody has inability to walk or whatever. But I think if they had a total menu of those things, that'd be something to explore. And you're right, Commissioner. I was looking at having the county pick that up as a, as a job perk. That's just for discussion purposes. I think we have opportunities. A lot of things maybe we haven't explored. But I do find $12,000 a little bit heavy for the average individual for their wages that they get here.
So Commissioner Schmidt, ironically, one of the things of motion is to get up from your desk and walk three times a day.
Yeah.
And they pay you a dollar into your HSA at no cost.
So do you wear a monitor?
You can use fitness trackers, whether it's your phone, or they have, some going off memory from the media yesterday. They have a set number. There's quite a few different type of watches. You can wear from Apple Watches to Garmin's.
Oh, yeah.
So.
But I mean, these are, I mean, actually, you know, if you want to maintain a healthy workforce, well, good health is do that. And you can't just sit behind your desk. And expect, I honestly believe that, I don't mandate, that's a bad word these days. But boy, I would encourage everybody to be enrolled in some kind of health activity. And I don't know what they are, category, A, B, C, Julia, I don't know.
And that's what we have, that's what the wellness plan currently has today.
You said the motion program is a dollar a day?
So it can be up to $3 a day. So if, and so it's fit, frequency, intensity, and tenacity. So first one is, if you get up and do 300 steps three times per day, an hour apart, that's $1. Intensity is, I think it's, off memory here, 3,000 steps per day or 30 minutes exercise, where your heart rate's elevated, that'd be another dollar a day. And tenacity is if you get 10,000 steps in a day. So if you do that, $3 a day, you get, you could earn up to $1,095 a year put into your HSA account. The other thing about fit is, if, speaking of trackers, UHC will give you $55 into your HSA account to use. Either, I'm sorry, to use either towards a tracker, or if you already have one, they'll just put it in your HSA account. So it's another $55 there as well.
So if you did the motion program in conjunction with the wellness program, you could save up to, you could reduce your healthcare costs by up to $1,695.
But the, so the other, there's two different programs that we're talking about here. So there's only about, the individuals that elect the high deductible plan are the individuals that are eligible for the motion program.
Okay.
And so there's very few individuals that actually are eligible for that program. But as we talk about wellness programming in general, that $50 premium reduction each month, there's a large plethora of things that employees can do to get that benefit. So I just want to be clear that to employees, it's not just about walking. So if you don't feel like walking that day, there's sleep challengers. There's all sorts of things. So just to make sure everybody's well aware that they're two different programs.
Right.
For what it's worth.
Yep. No, thank you, Julia. Yeah.
So is there thought on what you guys want to do? To get us off the dime here.
Julia, if they do in this wellness program, and that'll have to be, I don't know all the different things. They could save on a yearly basis, how much money?
$600.
How much?
$600.
$600. Okay.
Because of the reduction from their premium, correct?
Exactly.
And that applies to every program participant?
Medical, yeah. Well, to the employee.
Every, every employee.
Well, every employee could reduce if they chose. They don't have to, but they could reduce their.
If they meet the requirements of the program.
11, 11.7, yeah.
I, I do think there should be a clarification here, that they would have to also be signed up for this insurance program, right? To be on the will, to get that $50 premium deduction.
Yes, employees have to enroll in benefits, health insurance.
Right. So when we talk about 50% of the employees are signed up for the wellness program, we should maybe talk about the percentage of the people that are signed up for the insurance that are signed up for the wellness program. Maybe that statistic should be used.
That's a, that's a good question. So if 50% of our employees are signed up, how many of that 50% is program participant?
So no, let's look at it this way. So you have, and I'm, it might change this month, 87 enrollees, I believe, in a medical plan, about that?
Yeah, or nine, yeah.
Yeah, 87, let's call it 90. So you have 90 employees taking your group health insurance. Those 90 are eligible for the wellness program.
And 50% of them are currently signed up.
Exactly.
Correct. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all signed up, right? But 50% are participating.
The large majority will complete the program.
Yeah. Because there will be some that.
That answered your question?
That, that do a few of the wellness activities, but not all, so they don't get the benefit, the $50.
Yeah, because some of our employees get their healthcare insurance from a spouse or somewhere else.
Correct.
Yeah.
Alternative sources.
Correct.
So the large majority of that, 87, will accomplish the wellness program for the $50 benefit?
50%, 50%. So it's half right now.
Okay.
Good clarification.
Madam Chair, one question, if I may.
Go ahead.
Who actually administers? Does your office, Julia, or the insurance provider administers the information and sees if they're doing what they're required to do?
Well, 365 actually administers the program, but I get the data.
Well, you might be asking for, Commissioner, yes, there's no, there's no personal health information that Julia's going to get. It's basically, did this member complete, yes or no? So in other words, do they get the benefit, yes or no?
And 365 is independent?
Well, 365 is independent, yep.
My reason for the question is, is if we're concerned about employees' health, and we want to give them, instead of, I'm actually going to be, probably sticking my neck out on this, but I think it's not an issue. We provide it to all individuals, whether they take. whether they take our insurance or somebody else's insurance, because it ultimately makes our workforce healthier and should be an incentive. And I know Sheri is cringing over there, but I think it's a benefit and I think it's somewhat unfair for those individuals that don't take our insurance that they don't receive. So I think it's, it's an outside benefit. I think it should be provided to all individuals if possible.
Julia, our, our program that we have for wellness, is it, is it a list of things that you keep track of yourself? I mean, like, I, I know I've had experience where, where staff would keep track of their own things and there were a list of things, for example, if they took their own blood pressure each day, you know, with their machines. If they participated in the cancer walk last month, they get so many points. If they attended, if they took their kid trick or treating and walking, they got so many points.
Sure.
If they, if they got up and went to church, we even gave them points because they were, you know, and, and you handed it in and that was the way it was done. I mean, there was a ton of things that you could check off and get credit for participating in a well. Do we do something similar like that?
Similar, so well three sixty-five administers the programming. And how it works is eligible employees will need to take a health assessment, that's done by the nurses. And then based on their risk level, whether it be low, medium, high, determines how many challenges they need to complete throughout the year. And then also how many coaching sessions they need to have with this nurse. It's really reasonable and some of the programs, for example, each month, like I alluded to before, there, there's sleeping challenges, there's physical fitness, physical activity, running, there's volunteering is some of them. It's really structured, there's a portal and of course, they oversee that.
Julia, what are some reasons that people have given why they don't want to participate in the wellness program? What, you know, if we knew what those reasons are, what could we do in order to, you know, encourage people to participate?
That's a good question, I don't know why they don't participate.
So you, so you haven't taken any survey or data on, on that?
I have not, no.
Wish I could give you just a high overview, so I have a major majority of my clients have different versions of wellness programs from, from participation based to outcomes based. That's where you're getting the testing and your results actually determine your incentive. For those groups that are more towards a participation based, and surveys will show this as well, unfortunately, and I say that word strongly, they don't participate because it's not much incentive for them. They look for a cost. Unfortunately, you have to pay them to be healthy and it's a sad state, but it's where they're at. It's not until employers, and I'm sorry, programs you see in surveys start moving towards hybrids where they have to actually get tests done and those tests play a role, the percentage will go up more. Now that, there's always outliers. We have some groups that do participation based that their employees will love it. They're, it's just the culture. But we have others that if we get ten percent, we're lucky, so they end up dropping programs. So unfortunately, in programs that are participation based, we tend to see the driving factor is cost. What is my incentive?
Madam Chair, can we, we gotta, we, we've, we've chased the rabbit around a while. Can we agree preliminarily that the six percent would be what we would be, could agree to? And then, um, looking at other options and certainly encouraging our clientele to take the health program, which if they chose to, would just about pay for the additional premium cost for the diagnostic portion. Am I out of bounds here or?
The diagnostic portion is the alternate plan that's being provided. It's an eight point one one percent increase to the county and it provides that other benefit, those other benefits to the employee, if I'm understanding correctly.
Correct.
So that's the vote that I'm in.
You're vo- you're on the eight percent.
I'm on the alternate plan.
Okay. So this issue of the motion program and people, employee, certain employees can earn up to one thousand ninety-five dollars. How many people in the county right now are eligible to participate in the motion program?
Well, thirteen contracts, but there'd be, the spouses would be eligible too. So I don't know how many of those contracts are families. So we're going to say between thirteen and fifteen, thirteen and seventeen maybe, so.
Okay.
They'll be eligible to participate in the motion.
So you've got this tension here between the people who don't want diagnostic test, testing, because they're going to make some money off that versus there could be some employees who could make some money off participating in the motion program.
Not sure I'm falling, so the two.
Well, there's tension there, right? If you get rid of the motion program, you reduce the ability of these thirteen people, family members, to get up to a thousand ninety-five dollars per year. But there are other people who may fall, because of their personal circumstances, may fall into this pool of they require diagnostic testing and they're going to personally benefit from that. So it's just a trade-off, right?
Yeah, and keep in mind though, two separate plans, so they, one doesn't have access to the other.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct.
Julia, if I may, Madam Chair, is it possible that if we wanted to enroll or allow people to enroll in the health program outside of having the insurance, could they, could we implement something like that if we truly cared about all individuals' health?
The wellness program?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would just be an additional cost.
Yeah, the, and the, the risk factor or the fifty dollars plus whatever their administration fee.
Yep.
I'm looking for a motion.
Well, I'll get us off the dime for discussion purposes. I'll move that the county adopt the option number one, which is the six percent increase traditional high deductible plans slash plan designs remain unchanged.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay, any further discussion?
Commissioner Schmidt, I know that you have, you would prefer the, the alternative. I think this would be the time to, are we going to hash this out and, or stick with the six percent?
Well, I'm, I'm on the record that as far as this health program that we're offering to those that take our insurance, I think it's an outside cost of the county, it's an independent aspect. I think it should be offered to all individuals if we truly care about trying to make our, our health pool better because maybe that will be an incentive down the road as well. Sorry, Madam Monitor, I probably created more work somehow, but I truly think it's something that we should offer to all employees, whether they take our insurance or not. It's, it's a, the, the action is to try to make our employees healthier, encourage them to take steps upon themselves to get healthier. And as far as the motion, in motion, the other plan, I'm in agreement that I don't understand when those three, thirteen individuals, if we only have one that's actually actively participating, it seems like they have a huge incentive and, and are not taking an opportunity to do so, but.
So under the six percent plan, we haven't addressed the diagnostic thing. That's still out of pocket, out of pocket, correct? I think we're leaving our, maybe I'm, I just think that in this day and age, that diagnostic thing is probably one of the most important things you have. Because if you're in a situation, if you have any cancer situations, you have anything, you're going to have a lot of diagnostic testing. And I don't like to see our, our employees have to pay that out of pocket, out of pocket. I just don't, I don't think that's right.
Madam Chair, I'm going to offer a motion to amend.
What is your motion?
To add that the three six, or the program for health administered through the three sixty-five program be offered to all employees, not just those that take our insurance.
So your, the motion then is the six percent increase and then adding the additional.
Yes.
Wellness for other employees that aren't part of the plan.
Currently, yes.
Is there a second to that amendment?
I'm going to second that amendment for discussion purposes only, so I can ask a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
So now that we've got a proper amendment and second on the floor, what would be the increased cost to the county? And then, and then secondarily, what are the mechanics of how that would work?
And it's a great question, I think it's something we'd have to work with well three sixty-five. So there are a couple of factors into there. When you do pay that fifty dollars, for example, it's going to be a taxable amount to the employee. So there's some compliance issues there, not, nothing that you probably aren't aware of. We'll have to work with well three sixty-five to get a proposal to see if, the guess would be they would just take the current administrative fee and increase it by the number of bodies, which how many, so if we're saying, let's just for numbers sake, say ninety are on the plan, how many total eligible, a hundred and?
Thirty-two.
So we're talking about forty-two additional bodies for administration. And then if forty, all forty-two earn that fifty dollars per month, you know, that's probably not going to happen. But again, if even if you took half the current, another, let's just say twenty-five, twenty to twenty-five employees.
Now, the, the purpose or the intent behind wellness three sixty-five is twofold, right? Number one, it's to increase wellness, but number two, it is specifically conjoined or tied to economically incentivize the individual to do these things, hoping they become healthier and reduce their insurance cost.
Yep.
And we don't know if those people are on indifferent insurance plans through their spouse or through an alternative mechanism, whether they may already be receiving that benefit or not.
That is correct, I don't, I don't, two, two questions that, or two answers. One is that you probably, do you take reasons for waivers?
Not reasons, no.
Okay, so even if we make the assumption that all forty-two are on a spouse's plan, even if we had that data, you're correct, I haven't seen an employer to this day say, okay, if you have that plan, do you have access to another wellness? So outside of surveying those employees, you're right, we would not know that.
Right, so we, we wouldn't have the data, we don't know the reason why. And so if we did offer them wellness three sixty-five, they would essentially, if the county pays for that increased cost, we may actually be duplicating services, although we don't know to what extent. And then we'd be taking on the burden of having to track them, because we don't track them right now, right? We don't take on reasons or waivers.
Well, well three sixty-five would track them, so at least that's one burden. So yeah, well three sixty-five handles all of that. You, so that part, you would have to worry about the burden, but you are correct, you wouldn't know. Outside of surveying each of those individuals, are you on another plan? If you're on another plan, do you have access to a wellness benefit? If you do, what is that benefit? The plus side to it is, is as Commissioner Poppins mentioned as well, and we have a lot of clients that do ask these and we have some clients that do offer wellness benefits to, or programs to everyone. The incentive's usually different. We have some that just for those that aren't on the plan, get, we'll call it swag, right, water bottles, stuff like that. So there's differences. But that is the purpose, is to make this a place of a healthier culture and hopefully, you know, show that, you know, the county, the employer, we care about our employees, whether you're on the plan or not. So there is, there is both sides of it. It is trying to create that healthier workforce, even outside of knowing what they're doing outside of that plan.
So one thing that you did say, Sean, is that it would be the.
I'm like, she's not talking.
The six hundred dollars that we would be giving the employees that are not on the health insurance, that would raise their taxable income a year by six hundred dollars.
Yeah, I, I do want to go back to my compliance team, but I am fairly confident and believe that is a taxable amount. It's taxable income, yes.
So then technically, you would probably only be getting about, depending on your taxes, maybe twenty-five dollar, twenty dollar benefit.
Possible.
Put you in a different tax bracket.
And it still doesn't create the mechanism that it's intended for, which is to reduce this county's insurance cost.
Well, you know, this is not my side, but you know, work comp is also a health issue. No, it's not my side, but if you have a healthier workforce, you would think that would lead to lower work comp cases. But you're, you're correct, there's not data that we'd be able to say on the health insurance, are those employees going to drop? Other than this, if they eventually come on the plan and they've been participating, they're a healthier body, you are, your risk pool is healthier, so those that might be invited on at some point, when I say invited, they choose to come on, you would hope that they'd be healthier, because they do need to meet those qualifications for the wellness plan to get the incentive.
As far as this is being added to all employees, I still believe that it's a, a vision that we want to care about all employees' health. It's still such, or elective for those individuals, whether increases their taxes would be for them to decide if that's a benefit worth taking or not. But it is a benefit excluded kind of outside of the insurance. It's an incentive we're giving to employees. And I think it's an incentive we should give to all employees, so. Just like the insurance in itself, we give those individuals the opportunity to take, elect to take it or not. I think should, should have an incentive in whether or not they take this benefit or not. Irrelevant to whether or not they take insurance.
And so if I'm, if I'm just, we're discussing this and I've already said what my position is on the alternate plan, they can recoup fifty dollars of that seventy-dollar family cost a month by participating in the wellness plan?
They have to make, yeah, they have to meet the criteria of the wellness programming, so yeah.
And I'm talking the three sixty-five?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So that would mean, to your point, that would mean that, that, what was it, seventy dollars?
Correct.
That would, that would increase them by twenty dollars.
But what was the seventy dollars coming from?
The seventy dollars I thought was the increase in the cost of family under the alternate one plan.
The alternate plan?
Yeah.
Okay, my apologies, there we go.
So if you, if you had that, that would be the seventy dollars extra.
Correct, yep.
You take the health plan, you get fifty of that, negate it, so the actual cost is now twenty bucks. And you have the diagnostic thing included, correct?
I know, my, my problem is, is that whatever plan you look at, they're all expensive.
Yeah.
But if I go to the doctor and I need to have a biopsy and it, oh wow, I've got to pay that myself or twenty percent of that at least, and I could have just been paying twenty dollars or seventy dollars extra a month. I think if we care about our employees, that's what we should do. And they are incentivized that by, thereby, by participating in this wellness plan, if that cost is really something that is of concern to them. Because if I'm paying a thousand bucks a month and my diagnostic testing is not available, it's not even worth me having the insurance, more than likely. And I can go be under my husband's insurance or what have you, which also plays into what our pool of employees that are choosing coverage are. Certainly, the unavailability of the diagnostic testing is going to play into that.
Commissioner, I like your idea. If, if, if they have additional cost to the employee on the eight percent basis, but are able to negate the majority of that cost and include this one critical element, that makes sense to me, I could, I could support that.
So we have, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Sean, do you need any clarification on what that motion is?
We have a motion to amend the motion to adopt option number one. The motion to amend is to add the provision that the wellness program will be offered to all employees instead of just the insurance enrolled employees. Is that what we'll be voting on now?
Well, the six, if, if it's the six percent, that would still include the motion program.
It's, this is just the amendment at this point.
We're just voting on the motion to amend the motion?
To add the.
Not, not that motion.
Not the motion.
Not the motion program.
So, so let's vote on the motion to amend the motion. Okay, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
No.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
No.
Commissioner Landine.
Buck stops, dude.
We're, then we're going to turn around and have a roll call on the actual motion as it is or is not amended, correct? Yes, then I will vote yes on the amendment.
So, that would mean that Aaron's motion with Poppins's second would be to adopt option number one with the six percent with no change in plan to also include wellness program to be offered to all employees instead of just the insurance enrolled employees of Lincoln County. Correct?
Correct.
That's my understanding of the motion now. So with that, will you call the roll?
Madam Chair, may I have one question for Julia?
Go ahead.
Just for clarification, of those surveyed, either formally and informally, of those that asked to have the alternative where we have the, the testing covered under the co-pay, what was that percentage?
Fifty percent.
So it's, yeah, so we're.
Six of one, half dozen of another.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Madam Chair, while I didn't support the amendment, I do support the overall thrust of the motion, that's why I made it. So oftentimes, there's, in the legislative process, we have to take the good with the bad. Can't always get everything we want. Can't always get everything we want. And so I'll be supporting the six percent increase and because of that.
Thank you, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
No.
Commissioner Landine.
No.
Motion carries. We will move on to a discussion regarding permit fees.
Hi, Terry. Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
So I think I brought up, it's been a while ago, about establishing fees for overweight, oversized permits. And I think, I, I don't know if I, I mentioned possibly doing them for driveway access permits as well, so. I guess I'm looking from direction from the board. Again, I am ready to move on this, to possibly get this enacted. If you guys think it's, it's something that we need to do, I'd like to get moving on it so we could possibly get this in place for January first of twenty-two. So what we're looking at doing is we're going to establish fees, we'll, we'll put together an ordinance that'll establish fees for any oversized overweight permits issued in the county. Currently, we have nothing, we have zero. We do have a permitting process, they call in and they get their permit, they give us their weights at axles, width, height of their vehicles, and then we just give them our permit. Again, we, we've researched many of the other counties, especially the larger counties, most of them have a cost associated with the oversized overweight permit. So if that's something you would like to do, I think that, I think it's something we need. It'll help recoup some money. To date, again, I do have some fees established with that. But I'm not sure if I, if I'm ready to make them, I think I'd rather them come out in the ordinance when we do that. But if we were to have, and again, these fees are going pretty much in line with what other counties are charging for the oversized overweight permits. And if we would have had it in place this year, and this is to date probably about, you know, beginning of October, we're looking at twenty-five thousand plus additional revenue in fees, just for the overweight and oversized.
The only cost they're going to have is, I'm assuming it's going to call into the office and you'll need a machine to take payments?
No, so that's, that's another thing that we had discussed or we're kind of throwing around. And I spoke with, I know Manyaha County, I mean, they have that, that ability to, to take credit card payments or pay online. But we, I don't know if we're quite there yet. I, I know I talked with Toby, I think they kind of do sort of a little bit, or somewhat. But I think what we would do to start with is, again, part of the ordinance is going to be they have to request a permit within forty-eight hours of, of actual overhaul. And once that permit is, once they call in to get that permit, we will create an invoice. And again, we're going to get an email, we'll email them the invoice. And again, if, again, I have a couple of counties that do it that way, and if they don't pay, then they don't get another permit. But he said he's never had an issue. Again, the utility permit that we do, that's how we do those. They send in their permit, I figure out the cost, and then we invoice them for that, and then they send their check.
But aren't, a lot, a utility permits from a local utility, usually that's not going anywhere. You've got an overweight or oversized, could be somebody moving through the county, they come through one time, will never see them potentially again. That's not been a problem for other municipalities or counties?
A couple of counties that do that, no, nope. That, that, I mean, that's their, again, history. I mean, I don't, I couldn't tell you if that's, I mean, we could try to get set up with, with some sort of easy pay, taking credit cards, but again, I, that's going to take us a while and that's, you know, and I think I spoke with IT about it a little bit and that there's, there's a lot more to that, to get us on that, but.
All I can tell you from the retail side, which I've newly experienced in the last two years, once you invoice somebody, it's another duplication of trying to get a bill paid and, and it takes just that much more time and cumbersome. I, I just, I wish you'd monitor that as quickly as possible in case it is an issue so that we don't have to.
Well, I mean, again, that's something, even with like the utility permits, I mean, if I want to, you know, kind of mirror it with those. Again, I know Rayanne takes care of all that in the office administratively, she watches for those, the, the invoice or the, the checks to come in or not come in. And if they don't come in within a timely manner, she'll shoot them off another email and they're like, oh yeah, I got lost in our shuffle. And then the payment comes within a few days.
It's just, it's personnel time versus if you have them, when they call in, okay, you're applying for it, pay for it, it's done, cleared up, so. Anyway, good luck. Support, support doing this one hundred percent either way, so.
So Terry, what is the fee now for a driveway?
Nothing. Oh, driveways?
Yeah.
We, for driveways, we have no fee. But I know that there's quite a few counties that are starting to establish fees. The fees that I would, I would probably follow in line with would be what Manyaha County has for fees. So like a residential driveway access is probably going to be about eighty bucks. A farm field would be seventy bucks. Business, I think, or commercial is going to be a hundred and seventy-five. And then updating an existing is twenty-five bucks, or a temporary driveway permit is twenty-five.
So if that person needs a call or they pay that fee as well, they pay it themselves out of their own pocket?
Oh, yes, definitely.
So you're going to work with Attorney Golden and coming up with an ordinance that'll actually have those fees listed out that we can look at?
You betcha, and I, and my hope would be, I hope it'd be possibly the twenty-third of this month to bring up for the first reading of it.
Okay, sounds good.
I mean, if that, if that's good, and again, I guess we could probably, I don't know, do I, we just want to do everything out meeting, right, I mean, I, if I want to forward the document to them so they can read it prior, but it'll be on the agenda packet.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, as far as first reading, I mean, so again, I think we'll have ordinances drawn up for both of these. So we'll have to have first readings and then second reading public hearing, so.
All right, looking forward to it.
Any other questions about that?
I do not.
All right.
Attorney Golden, do you need an executive session? Okay, and what do you need an executive session for? Contract and employment. So I've got SDCL one twenty-five two sub four and SDCL one twenty-five two sub one, asks for a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's. Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes, I need a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes, motion carries, we're adjourned, thank you.